So I'll call a meeting to order. It's the August the 19th, 2019, Girdwood Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. Girdwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Opens Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 4462-310 and Alaska Municipal Code 125. Public meetings. Call Mike Edgington, Co-Chair and Land Use Supervisor.
Kristina Hendrickson, Parks and Recreation and still recovering from laryngitis.
Jerry Fox, Public Safety and Co-Chair.
Erin Dunne, Fire Department.
Okay, and you may have an attendee later. Disclosures, I'll give you a second just to look through to see if there's anything you want to disclose, board members?
There is an item on the agenda about short-term rentals on Echo Ridge, either on Echo Ridge or just on, put that out there.
Okay, I don't see any conflict of interest there.
And then, as stated previously, we have fire budget on the agenda and what has been up with all of your fire departments.
Okay, no rule, there's no conflict there, although substantial conflict. Do you see anyone objecting?
No.
Okay. So just checking, there's nothing for me. Agenda revisions and approval, tonight's agenda. Anybody wish to make any additions?
I'm going to approve tonight's agenda.
Second, all in favor? Okay, now we'll go through minutes. Budget work session number one, July 15th, 2019.
I move to approve the minutes from that budget session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? The GBOS regular meeting minutes on July 15th.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes on July 15th.
Second.
All in favor? July 29th, GBOS budget work session, two minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from budget session two.
Second.
All in favor?
I was there, so.
July the 29th, we've had a lot of meetings this last one, July the 29th, Municipality of Anchorage and GBOS quarterly meeting.
I move to approve the quarterly meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Three again. Finally, July the 12th, 2019, GBOS budget work session, three meeting minutes.
I move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Did I say July, not August? Did I say July? August 12th. Okay. All in favor?
I'm not going to vote because I couldn't hear about eighty percent of it.
Public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please take side conversations to the foyer. I have Jerry fully set for me.
Yep.
Anchorage Historic Preservation Commission meeting in Girdwood on Thursday, the 22nd of August. Free meeting includes a tour of Aliaska and roundhouse. Formal meeting starts at 5:30 in this room. HLB Advisory Commission meeting is scheduled to be held in Girdwood on September the 10th at noon, again in Girdwood Community Room, that's here. The LUC GBOS joint meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM Monday, September the 16th, that's before the next GBOS meeting. Nonprofit grant presentation meeting, we'll have that on Wednesday, September the 18th at 7:00 PM here in this room. And then the votes on specific GBOS grant allocations will be the following month for the regular GBOS meeting in October. Introductions, presentations, and reports. Alaska State Defense Force presentation by Simon Brown. Okay, Mike?
Lieutenant Colonel Simon Brown is our president, couldn't make it into place because Colonel James here, who will be doing the presentation.
Excellent, if you could come up to the microphone. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much, I greatly appreciate this opportunity to address your community, about the Alaska State Defense Force, who we are, what our mission is, what we do. First off, I'm Colonel Alaska John James, is it right, we're good? Colonel Alaska John James, so I have a couple handouts here, like to present to you real quickly.
Okay.
Absolutely, and get this question, welcome, real quickly, the Alaska State Defense Force, who we are, who we work for, what we do, and then I'll put the rest of them up here, if you'd like to have them, or in the back, wherever, I guess you got some stuff back there, I'll make sure they get to the back. So I am the brigade commander currently of the Alaska State Defense Force. We work for the Agency General, I work for Brigadier General Torrey Sacks. First slide there, talk about our history, where we came from. We actually were established during World War II as Alaska Territorial Guard. You know what, anybody else want to hand out real quick, raise your hand, I'll give out what's left. See some questions going around, anybody want to know? Okay, we'll keep moving. Sure. So, we were devised, Major Mucktun Marshall actually got the start of the Alaska Territorial Guard at the time, and they were formed up out of essentially a lot of Native Americans from western Alaska, down in southeast as well, about 6,400 soldiers in about 107 different detachments around the state. So from 1940 up until 2019, actually, two elements came out of the Alaska Territorial Guard when they were disbanded in 1947. The Alaska State Defense Force was formed and then the Alaska Army National Guard was formed. Currently in the Alaska Organized Militia, that's a legal term, organized militia, i.e. authorizing something about the Constitution, there's four components, everybody's part of the Army Guard and the Air Guard, there's also the State Defense Force and the Naval Militia. And we are part of that Alaska Organized Militia. Our mission essentially is to augment, to force multiply, for the Alaska National Guard holistically. And if I use the word Alaska National Guard, it's nearly interchangeable with Alaska Organized Militia, they're getting the four components. As you know, the Alaska Army National Guard and the Air Guard can be federalized and then moved out of the state. We have soldiers deployed forward right now, both in the Central Command, AOR, area responsibility. So what we do is we augment during fires and emergencies and earthquakes, we deal a lot of traffic management. Matter of fact, this last weekend, we were out in the city of Houston managing traffic for their Houston Founder's Day event. But in a nutshell, what we do is we augment the Alaska National Guard during emergencies, both homeland security, homeland defense, and civil support operations. Our mission essential task list, first off is rural resilience, our rural resilience task force, so that's our second scout unit out in Beaufort, Alaska. We also have detachments in Quinnahock, Queeflock, Kipnook, Hoover Bay, Scammon Bay, and as far north as Okeau, from Lee Parrow. We do a lot of high-speed communications, it's HF, UHF, VHF, HF, high-frequency radio-type communications, and we can talk across the state. Domain awareness, we supply information to the appropriate agency, be it the United States Coast Guard, Alaska State Troopers, or the FBI, if we see something abnormality in our domain, right? So we reported aircraft that were of third world, correction, third world, near-purged state actors, we reported vessels as well, we have a detachment on Little Diamond Island, which is 2.4 miles from Big Diamond Island, and the international line there is 1.1, and I think I could say this, it's not classified, but just last week, we had a Russian Coast Guard vessel that basically went up a 1.1 mile line, and we called that in, that's our point to call it in. So we did that. We have some logistics capabilities, some transportation capabilities, some medical capability, things of that nature. We also do water purification as well, we have a water purification. A lot of people ask, hey, why do you need the State Defense Force if the Alaska National Guards are around? Let me give a real quick synopsis of why that happens. The Alaska Army National Guards' force structure is mitigated by National Guard Bureau and the Department of Defense, right? So the Department of Defense takes threat assessments, and then build a force structure to mitigate against that threat assessment. And then what happens is the guard gets a slice of that. Well, the problem with that, it's a great approach, the problem with that is, the force structure is basically depicted to the National Guard Bureau and then the state of Alaska, what force structure you have, in other words, what units? Do you have engineers, do you have infantry, do you have artillery? And that changes and shapes depending on the current threat assessment, okay? So what we do is we take a holistic approach of the Department of Military Affairs Affairs, and then we look at perceived potential threats and then capability gaps, and we build force structure to mitigate or lean against those capability gaps and seams. That's why we come up with water purification. There was an engineering unit here in the Alaska Army National Guard, and it went away, the National Guard Bureau, big DOD, took that away from us, but we still had a claw, a potential for the use of water, purified potable water during emergencies. So the tag, the Agency General, asked us to actually kind of rebuild that force structure, and now, and within our engineers, within our unit, in the Alaska State Defense Force, we can purify water. We have three systems, LWPS, light water purification systems around the state, kind of, one in Kodiak, and one in Fairbanks, and one in Wasilla, so that if a community runs out of water, then we can, for short-term purposes, make purified water. The other thing they asked us to do was long-range communications, we have bubble sets without going into the radio frequency, radio world, we can put guys on, or soldiers on hilltops and communicate if we need to. They, the, good example, the Army National Guard had a signal company, and then DOD, NGB, now the Department of Defense, now, I'm sorry, I spent years and years in the Army, so I just Google acronyms, so if you don't understand something, please stop me and I'll make some English out of this. So National Guard Bureau basically took away the signal company from the Alaska National Guard, and then the Agency General directed the State Defense Force to build out some signal capability, and we've done that, we've done that, we can communicate, I guess the farthest station we've actually talked to was Palasca County, Virginia, but we can talk to the National Guard Bureau in Washington DC, we can talk to the Washington State Guard, we can talk around the state of Alaska pretty well. Task organization, we have a brigade headquarters, it's in Wasilla, at the Alcantara Armory, we have a scout detachment out in Beaufort, with supporting detachments in that local area, we just established detachments down in southeast in Genoa, Polack, and Ketchcan, and then we have a support battalion in Alcantara Armory and Wasilla, and that's comprised essentially of that engineer, we have most of our engineers now, we're around in Kodiak Island, but we do have engineers there in Alcantara Armory as well. Civil support capabilities, pretty much hit on that, we got high-speed radios, we can talk HF, UHF, VHF, satellite phones, sat phones, we got Vans, Iridium Go's, all kinds of little high-speed talking stuff, and we can talk and we can purify water, and then we can report anomalies in our domain that don't look right, you know? You all heard of the C says, you know, see something, say something, it's the same thing on a bigger scale, so if we see an aircraft, or a vessel, or something in our domain that's not right, that's not from around here, so to speak, yes, I'm from the south, then we can report that through higher. And that chain of command goes through the National Guard, the Department of Military Affairs Affairs, the Commissioner, and then the appropriate agency, whether it's US Coast Guard, or whether it's the Alaska State Troopers, or ALCON, the Alaska Command, we've done that a bunch of times. Individual skills, one of the things that we encourage about this, we have about 60.2% fire service in Army retirees like myself, you know, I've spent a lot of time in the Army, and I retired from the Army, what do you, you know, to me, I'm just using myself as an example, but, you know, it's better to continue to use my experience and keep us around in the state, rather than let all that experience and a quarter century of knowledge walk out the door, right? So you take a retired Army guy like myself, and then we try to get in the State Defense Force and continue to leverage that knowledge and experience. But first aid, land navigation, incident reporting systems, and then things like traffic management. We have big events in communities, which puts a lot of squeeze on local police departments, we can come in for an event potentially, and then assist that police department with traffic management. We've done that successfully for 30 years, the last example would be in Houston, we've done it in Wasilla, we've done it in Beaufort, and please talk to others, Alaskans that live in those communities and ask them about us, and they will tell you that we do a fairly professional job, so. Incident command systems, we're well-versed in that, a lot of our soldiers are not only, you know, either veterans or retirees, they're state troopers, we've got guys who retire from the Wasilla Police Department, just all over. Any questions so far? Because we're going to wrap it up here real soon, appreciate, might get close to the time hack there. Talking real quick about benefits, one of the things that we think is a big benefit is, you know, we encourage, even, you know, we have nonparticled soldiers that join the State Defense Force, and then we drill one week in a month, and we have all kinds of training, like I said, from first aid communications to all sorts of excellent training. So we ask our employers that support us to, you know, allow soldiers to go to the training on the weekends, and we do it one weekend, usually in the winter time for about a week or four or five days at least, but then you have a more experienced, more educated soldier comes back as an employee to your organization with those life experiences, we have had soldiers, you know, save lives and help out with human remains and all kinds of stuff, so, whether it's telecommunications, or written communications, or oral skills, all that kind of stuff. So you get a better soldier back on Monday if you let him train on Saturday and Sunday. Any questions, I mean, all, I greatly appreciate your time, thanks very much, hope it wasn't too long.
Thank you, Colonel James.
Absolutely, my contact information is in there, if you have anything, please just call.
If you have a question in the back room.
Oh, yes. This is my agent, and it's concerning your agency can be a manpower resource for state, federal, and US organizations.
Absolutely.
Can they be used for private organizations if that private organization should need a manpower resource?
Potentially, yes, absolutely.
Would be a problem, right?
Depending on the scenario, yes.
Okay, and they would contact you directly, or would...
Sure, myself or the Director of Operations there, Colonel Simon Brown, absolutely, he's Moscow, he's operating somewhere else, so I had to help out, yes, sir.
How many statewide now?
Last year, it was 140. So some of our detachments, great question, I appreciate the question, some of our detachments have 30, 35 soldiers, and some of them have, like in Little Diamond, two.
Alone and unafraid.
We're out there, so, okay, thanks very much, appreciate your time.
So we're on SOC Committee reports, three minutes each, start of Trails Committee. Kate Sandberg.
I'm Kate Sandberg with Trails, and we have five items of interest from our August 6th meeting. First of all, we did submit a KMTA grant application for the Beaver Pond Trail system signage, and I want to thank the Board of Supervisors again for your resolution of support, that was obviously included in the package. Second of all, there was a very serious accident at the tram, thankfully not fatal, but the tram is now closed, pending risk management reviews and assessments, and there's no date for reopening at this time. Secondly, Aliaska Highway Sweeps, after discussion, we passed the following motion, and I'd like to read it. Girdwood Trails Committee moves to recommend a GBOS resolution of support for DOT application for community transportation program funding to resolve design and safety issues related to the Aliaska Highway Pedestrian Safety Corridor, and it was passed unanimously. So we have your support with whatever you decide to do. Next, fourth, Virgin Creek Falls Trail is a mess, and we know that, and so we are going to be focusing on it this coming year, it needs better parking, it needs tread, it needs signage, it needs literally just about everything. So it's complicated by land trusts and private property, but we decided to have a fall walkthrough, hopefully with neighbors to assess it, and we'll, we could put it on Facebook perhaps, and have anybody who wants to walk through with us, because it really needs some work, and we know that. And finally, we are, the Trails Committee is looking for a treasurer, Diana Livingston has retired, although she is still working for Girdwood Inc., so she does the bulk of the work, and we need a person who is wanting to get involved in the Trails Committee and not have a really big job, and we're looking for someone to help us out. So you can contact, I think the best thing to do would be contact Margaret if you're interested, and she can forward it on to us.
Thank you, any questions? Brian, Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Brian Burnett here with Land Use, we had our regularly scheduled meeting last Monday on August 12th, there was 13 of us in attendance, we received committee reports from the committees that we're going to be hearing from tonight, also Trails Committee, HLB, Ron Tenney was in to update us on the upcoming September 10th, HLB meeting here in Girdwood. We got an update from Kyle on Little Bear's rebuild project. Mike was able, Mike Edgington was able to give us the GBOS report, along with his Title 21, Chapter 9 review report, and Housing Working Group, we're going to hear all from all of those committees tonight, so I won't go into it any further. Additionally, we also discussed the Aliaska Highway Pedestrian Safety Corridor as far as making a recommendation for the GBOS resolution of support for DOT to apply for Alaska Community Transportation funding to address the design and safety concerns. We did pass that motion, we had some discussion about how appropriate it was for that funding and getting the DOT to admit what was going on there, we'll hear more about that this evening. We also were, we had our second presentation on the proposal to rename the Girdwood Baseball Field in honor of Sladen Mole, and we'll be looking forward to the successful passing of that this evening by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. And then we had a discussion of short-term rental impacts on the community, notably on Echo Ridge, and this is also on the agenda item tonight, so I am going to keep my report short, because we have a lot to talk about tonight.
Any questions for Brian on the Land Use Committee?
Thank you.
So third item is legislative report. Spring?
Yeah. It's your turn.
We're getting through it very quickly.
All right, hi, my name is Joshua Spring, I am the Assembly Aide for Suzanne LaFrance. I don't really have a whole lot to update you folks on today, I guess I'd like to tell you a little bit about the main things that we've been seeing chatter on, there's been a lot of confusion apparently about the new tobacco laws, so if there's anyone in this room who knows anyone who is 19 or 20 years old, who works in an establishment that sells tobacco, none of those people need to lose their jobs at all. For some reason, there was an email going around that I got to take a peek at, saying that there were going to be young people losing jobs at gas stations and so forth because of new tobacco laws, and none of that's true at all, I'm not sure how this affects people in this room very much, but Suzanne definitely wanted me to let you guys know. And other things we've been seeing a lot of talk on have been changes to the stormwater utility that we have been dealing with, with the community councils in South Anchorage, up on the hillside, and she wanted to let me know, let everyone here know that none of those changes are going to affect anyone here. I heard mention that you're having a historic preservation meeting on August 22nd, I guess I feel inclined to ask if you needed any assistance on that, or if there's any historic areas here in Girdwood that you needed recognized, that you were having trouble with currently?
I don't think we're having any trouble with any of them.
Okay, I used to be an Assembly Aide for downtown Anchorage, and we did have an issue with a water tower in Government Hill, so I felt inclined to ask a little bit, just to see, I'm not, I'm still kind of relearning what's going on in Girdwood here a bit, but aside from that, I think that's really all I've got for tonight. Is there any, like, issues that you really want to make sure that Suzanne knows about, that you want to make sure that she's, like, just really on top of it? So, I could have found a better way to say that. She wants to make sure she knows what's important to the community tonight and everything that's going on, but other than that, like, I'm always grateful to have a chance to drive out here at least once a month to come see this, so thanks for the cool ride, guys, and thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else from the legislative bodies, so Girdwood Area Plan, Eric. Eric Phillips.
We did not have a meeting last month due to the lack of attendance, so we have been, though, behind the scenes working on a couple things. I'll do a quick budget update, so we're, our treasury balance is currently $24,825.28, and we're negotiating right now for the possibility of the scope of work for the contractor for the next phase, which would include these topical items, and we'll have more details as we work through some of these things, but the project management is one piece of that, it's the smallest piece, the community and stakeholder engagement, so this is where they go in and help with the focus groups and that kind of thing, to get some more information. And then the existing condition analysis, so preparing materials, working with all the different entities to, you know, gather all those materials together so we can analyze and collate that, and then developing the elements of the Girdwood Area Plan, so that's in general what the next phase is that we'll be doing. The next meeting is next Wednesday, the 28th, right here.
Eric, any questions?
It's six or seven?
Normally it's six.
No, it's six.
So that's a six. Okay, Garrish Library Report, Claire Agnew.
Hi, everyone, Claire Agnew, I'm the Garrish Library Manager. Garrish Library was open for 147 hours and had 2,531 visitors for the month of July. So let's see, coming up, Family Storytime will be back on September 6th, every Friday at 11, it's all ages Storytime, every Friday at 11. Baby Time will be back September 5th, every Thursday at 12, that's geared for babies, zero to 18 months, and older siblings are welcome, so that's baby's time, every Thursday at 12. Wee B Jamin, our music Storytime, will be back on September 21st, that's a Saturday, also at 12 o'clock, so Wee B Jamin Music for zero to five, Saturday, September 21st at 12. Okay. Also, if you have a kid or teen that's interested in K-pop, which is Korean pop music, I do a program at LUSAC every month, and so our next one is Saturday, September 7th at 3:00 PM at LUSAC, so I just want to put that out there, it's really fun, more and more kids have been coming every month, so they meet people with similar interests, and we eat Korean snack food and watch music videos, so yeah. Next one, Saturday, September 7th at 3:00 PM at LUSAC, that's the big one in town. School's starting soon, so it's a reminder that I do proctoring, if you'd like to take a test here instead of going into town, or if you take online classes and you need someplace to take a test, I proctor, so stop by the library or call me, 343-4074, to set that up. And then this evening, I received a really cool picture of a kid and the sunflower he grew from one of our gardening programs. It's, I posted it, so you can take a look, but if you have sunflower pictures from our gardening program, or plant pictures that you grew from our seed library, I would really appreciate it if you could send us those pictures, and I will post them, and then I can use them as advertisement for our next year's seed library. You can email that at library@girdwood@uni.org, or stop by with a flash drive or something. As always, Phil, sorry I'm mumbling today, follow us on Facebook at facebook.com/APLGarrish. All right, any questions? There are a lot, and I'm a bull, I'm sorry.
You said if we have any teams that are interested in K-pop, what if we have a library manager who's interested in K-pop?
Then you do a K-pop program. That's how I get to do that, yeah. If you, if we have enough people in Girdwood that are interested, I will do two K-pop programs, so far the demand is, LUSAC is enough.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks.
Girdwood Manager Report, Kelly.
Good evening, Kyle Kelly here with Service Area Manager. Starting with parks, we always like to recognize our seasonal employees, and one of them is David Parr, he is working hard for us as our seasonal park caretaker. Today, David had the unfortunate nature to have to deal with fish guts in a garbage can that was left up by moose meadows, and so we really advise people to dispose of your fish waste really well, it had probably been cooking since Friday, so if he turned on the albert, he could smell it before he got to moose meadows, so it was pretty bad, so give Dave some respect if you see him out there, he had a tough weekend, cottonwood fell on his truck with a more storm on Friday, so we're trying to give a whole lot of praise, so thanks to Dave who's listening. We have SCA... We have SCA crew member who's still with us. We had two this summer, one Brooke Green. He got called from military service a month and a half early. So Jesse really stepped up and has been doing trail work for us out there. Him and David today were on the cottonwood, around the Beaver Pond, and they took out a large cottonwood that came across the trail from that windstorm on Friday. And so that Beaver Trail is open and Beaver Pond Trail is. And he's done a lot of work in those last couple of weeks on the trail behind the school, the Ditterod Trail from the school up to Crow Creek Road, and then on the other side of Crow Creek Road, which takes you back up to towards the hamtram parking lot. He did a lot of root work, drainage work, and we've installed fish netting on the boardwalks. And we're just waiting to see how the drainage works and the boardwalks work once it starts raining. So we really appreciate him. He's only with us for three more days and then he goes off to college. So we really appreciate Jesse and Brooks for their internship this summer with us. And as always, Emily Maxwell is keeping an eye on the campground for us over there and taking care of that. Contracts, our weed contract is underway. There's been a lot of invasive weed control work out there. We thank Julie Johnson for her efforts in that and partnership there with US Forest Service on that. And our turf contract will be going until about mid-May here. The grass really hasn't been growing this summer with this crazy hot summer, so we've been doing a lot more pruning as offsetting with them, so they've been taking care of pruning for us in Town Square. And it's worked out nicely. As always, we're trying to keep up with the watering. It's something I've heard this year. Quickly, the baseball field, we have a fall league going on, so there are some kids playing out there. So if kids come out to play, please give the field to them. And then as always, Sunday night has baseball going on as well in that sense. We're working through the Little Bears Playground, doing a lot of assessment work. We had assessment done last year by Leathers and Associates who built the playground. And so we've been working through that list and getting a lot of things accomplished out there. And we're currently getting ready to start working on a grant for Lions Bluff Park. They want to get a pavilion. And the Land Water Conservation Fund grant is coming up in the fall, and so we're getting ourselves in shape to apply for that grant. And then Skate Park, Blue and Gold came a couple of weekends ago and did their last of the summer series. And we had a great event out there, great turnout. Make sure Anchorage, kids from all over the region, a lot of Girdwood kids. And we thank them for their efforts out there. Our next meeting with the Girdwood, Friends of the Girdwood Skate Park is tentatively scheduled for August 27th, so a week from tomorrow. Here in this room at 7:00 p.m. And so we welcome anybody to come out who has interest in supporting the skate park, especially for projects next year. We'll be discussing that. Trails, quickly, I'm going to touch on the hamtram because I know everybody, this is the key thing for the Valley. It is closed. We are, since we've had two large incidents out there, one being fatal within eight weeks, we're taking our time with reopening it. We're examining everything. We're evaluating everything and looking and seeing what improvements we can do to help people stay safer out there and from also harming themselves in unintentional ways. So we'll be reviewing that over the time, but please give us time. We're not going to rush to reopen it. We want to make sure we do it in an appropriate fashion. We know this is a very valuable asset to the community. It is a community building. It was handed to us to maintain. We want to keep that going, so we try to get that taken care of. Let's see, just quickly talking on nonprofit grants, we do have a presentation next week from our nonprofit grantees for 2020. So you're more than welcome to come out and see that. We have finished the 2019 grants. They've been sent out and processing. I think all payments have been sent out for the grantees for this year. And the period for application for 2020 closed on June 21st. And for this year, our applications are from Challenge Alaska, Four Valleys Community School, Girdwood Art Institute, Girdwood Community Club, Girdwood Valley Transit, and Little Bears Playhouse. Speaking of grants that we have, we have finished a $17,000 grant for the new trail on the Lower Ditterod, so that's been wrapped up and closed. We have remaining funds of about $29,000 with our RTP grant. We're determining if we can use those funds this year to continue with our trail work, or we might hold till spring. At this point in time, we don't think there's going to be RTP grant cycle for 2020, just the way the budget and everything fell. So we may just hold off on using those funds till next year if we can. And then we have several small grants that we're working through related to our tool purchases from Alaska Park Foundation and also Alaskan Community Foundation. So we're using them as we can. Margaret does a great job of keeping our social media and websites updated with all current information and especially with meeting agendas and minutes. And we do have our videos online, so if you like to watch GBOS, as you can see here, we try to put them online. And you can, they're very entertaining. We like likes, clicks. You can subscribe, so thanks a lot. Switching over to roads. Road maintenance is currently, we're going through a ton of projects. We're actually right now on Aliaska View doing the beginning of three large culverts there. We spent all day today taking out a culvert and putting in a 60-inch culvert. And they're fish passage culverts, so they take a lot more effort to get them in. And so we'll be there for at least the next week to take care of that. But our crew's been really great. We've knocked out a ton of projects this summer, and things seem to have gone really well with this weather. We're just waiting to see how this drainage works, because we haven't had rain to make it work. So we'll be going back around and watching it all after it gets done. Major projects, we'll talk a little bit about later on tonight, but we are working on a replacement for Little Bears and Glacier City Hall over there with a new community-owned building that can be used for Little Bears. And so we'll talk more about that later on. The Aliaska Highway Pedestrian Flasher Project, Phase One is done. All the wiring conduits and base mounts have been put in. And now we're just waiting for the hardware to show up from the manufacturer. And what I heard is that they are going to be back here on the 16th. It sounds like the second week, full second week of September. All that material is supposed to arrive by the boat, and then they're going to install starting on the 16th of September. And then the project should be done shortly after that. So we'll have that flasher system in out there for pedestrians crossing Aliaska Highway here at High Tower and Hayglove. Finances, the Girdwood Undesignated Fund balance right now sits at $335,000. That's as of the audit this year. For road expenditures in July, we spent $41,428 with the contractor for a total so far of $324,256.17 for this year. And we have currently spent about 53% of our street maintenance or our public works budget for the year. Parks, we have expended 32% of our budget for the year, but we have actually quite a bit encumbered that we pay out in the season. So those bills will start coming here in September and October and moving forward from there. We have a capital reserve in parks right now of $135,000, sort of a savings account for projects going forward. For police, we've expended $212,000 of the $650,000 for the police contract. We do have some invoices to pay out for them, and that will be happening in the coming weeks. And so right now, we've only spent 32% of our budget, but we'll catch up quickly for past months here. And then for fire, we spent $747,000 of the $1.1 million for the budget there, and so that's 66%. So with all our budgets going forward, we look to be on pace and on track to finish this year with a surplus, if not even. So that's everything for me. Any questions?
Any questions from the audience?
Just a comment. You said that the nonprofit grant would be next week presentation?
Next month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions from the public? Thank you, Kyle. Supervisor Reports are next. Mr. Public Safety, which is Jared.
Kyle and I met with the municipal attorneys last Tuesday to talk about the new contract with Whittier. And we're very close to sending that revised contract over to Whittier in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, we've had, later on the agenda, we have something about lowering the speed limit on Crow Creek Road. And we've had a comment about speeding on the Aliaska Highway. We're going to talk to the chief about. But I will let the chief, Deputy Interim Chief, I'm not sure the exact title of that. Public Safety Director, how about that? I'll let you talk.
Good evening. My name is Andre Shaya. For the month of July, for the statistics for the Girdwood area, the Whittier Police Department responded to 116 calls for service in Girdwood area. Majority of our calls were traffic calls. We had roughly 51 traffic calls for service, which includes traffic stops, DUIs, and traffic and driving enforcement. We also had 18 security checks usually at nighttime. A lot of these also occurred during the Fourth Fair Weekend. We do a lot of security checks, businesses, private venues, things of that nature. Suspicious activities, contacts, we had suspicious activities when people called in for activities, suspicious vehicles, suspicious persons. We had roughly nine contact on that. Burglary theft, trespassing calls, we had five of those. Utoxicated pedestrians, eight individual contacts. And again, that's primarily during the Fourth Fair Weekend. So it's not something we normally see out in this area. Other disturbance assault type calls, we roughly had six of those. Welfare checks that people call in or we're checking on people on parks and things like that, roughly four of those. Minor or alcohol offenses dealing with minors, we had three of those. Patrol requests that people actually call in, want some specific areas to patrol, two of those. We actually had more, but some of those turned into traffic stops, things of that nature. So these were just specific patrol requests, specific areas. There you got patrol requests generally for the road area and a timberline area that will set up an officer there as officers are available to do these couple of hours just to run radar and be invisible to turn for people that want to go get to point A to point B way to best. So another, we had 10 other calls. Those included from civil calls from summonses, paperwork we issued, to other welfare checks dealing with behavioral health type issues, including animal calls and some warrants we put under the other category. So for a total of 116. Also during the month of July, we had two main, two, I guess, very important issues. We had one, the hamtram incident where officers went to assist on that. Girdwood fired a phenomenal job. Were there just to support, we took over just doing an informational investigation. And the following, we had that airplane crash that was also requested. We primarily did traffic control in that area. The Alaska State Troopers with the primary agency did an investigation. So again, like I want to reiterate, regardless of where the primary agency, if we're asking for help or assistance, we'll be there. A lot of it depending on what kind of manpower I have or why happened in the area, but we'll try to get here as soon as we can, especially on primary calls. With that, I know I've talked to Kyle. We do have him being set up to discuss some of the Girdwood contracts issues. Some other things I've talked to Kyle, sent him some information is I asked, about two weeks ago, I talked to Scott Thomas with DOT. He's one of the project engineers in DOT. What the concerns and complaints we've gotten that are passed through to the Whittier Police Department was the areas where pedestrian traffic would be or bike trails, where people drive in there, things of that nature. DOT contacted us because they want to know who we'll cite. Of course, we'll cite if we have people that want to be witnesses and tell us if the driving vehicle got a last impact, we will give them citations for driving a motorized vehicle on a pedestrian area. The second area that we talked to, when I talked to Mr. Thomas, was apparently they tore down some barriers that private citizens put up on these areas. And I understood where he comes, came from because of the state designated areas that private individuals can. But when asked if Girdwood itself is a governmental body or governmental agency could do it, he said yes, as long as it meets Girdwood's requirement. I pass that information on to Kyle Kelly. And again, I contacted Mr. Thomas again today just to reiterate that was something that Girdwood would be on the duty, he said yes. So that's something that will be more than long-term, Girdwood as well as DOT can do some enforcement in those areas. Other than that, that's about it. If anyone has any questions?
You both have questions?
Okay. Bear with my voice, I apologize. For, when they're available, to be able to set up officers to patrol a particular area of concern, what number can a citizen call you to set that up?
There is a separate number for Girdwood, but it goes to the same dispatch center. The one I remember is the 472-2340. It's our dispatch center contract with Cordova. They just ask, talk to one of the officers or myself during normal business hours. And if they have any specific times they're concerned about, we'll try to make an officer available for those times, like this week. And again, it's all based on available officers, but we try to accommodate that.
Thank you very much.
I just had a question about the, under other, you have animal issues, animal calls.
Yes.
What's that consisting of? It seems to be a very low bear.
That consists of people calls on a bear, like a bear sign issue or dog calls. So that is generic in there. So we do that, we send an officer there. Some ones I've seen basically, and generally just when the tourist bus comes in, people see a bear, they get all excited, want to get too close. So we try to make sure they keep distance, let Mother Nature do their thing while we stay away.
Is 116 service calls consistent with previous July's?
I did not run the previous July report. I wasn't here during that time. I believe it may be a little bit more because like for prime example, for this Fourth Fair Weekend, I made a point for, we pretty much had most of our coverage right here in Girdwood, so that was the biggest event of the year. So the area, we didn't have to really worry about, the Forest Fair Committee took care of pretty much all the venues inside. We didn't walk through security checks. We just concentrated outside of Forest Fair areas and predominantly most of our issues from traffic and parking issues.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just one more comment and follow-up. Aliaska Highway speeding. We would like to see more enforcement on the Aliaska Highway as a community, I believe. I'll give you an example. This morning when I was walking about nine o'clock in the morning, there was a guy coming down the road, passes another guy, had to be doing 60 miles an hour on lower Girdwood. You know, it just doesn't make any sense. And we've seen, I, what I believe is a lot more traffic this summer. And I don't know whether it's just me, but it just seems with the warm weather, lots more tourists, a lot of people going fast. And we'd really like to see a presence on the highway so that people understand that we do have police. Because there is some thought out there that we don't have police because we did for a short period of time.
I'll remind my officers as well.
Just the presence.
Yes, and that's what we're trying to do. Even if we don't have calls in the Girdwood area, we still do drive-bys and security checks and things of that nature, just so people see us out there. I know sometimes I patrol, if I'm not getting stuck behind a desk, I like to do some patrolling, so I'll go through here in my own market. And I'll make stops, it's something not too intelligent. And as advised, a lot of times I'm not in uniform, but I'll advise who I am, make sure they're aware of, you know, what we're trying to do. Our primary issue is being voluntary compliant. And I know we're trying to outfit one of our new vehicles, you see the pickup, does not, that's the only vehicle that doesn't have radar right now. We're trying to outfit that with radar. Our other expediter, our other Tahos and SUVs, they all have radar. And I also have one other unmarked unit that I could probably put in this area occasionally. Usually she drives through this area around the new time. And that's unmarked in with radar as well. And I did get forwarded an email from, and I made it a point to let my officers know that especially if on down times on Whittier's side, come on Girdwood's side, meet the people and have some fun.
Thank you.
Public Safety Advisory Committee, I see Mike here. Do you have any comments, Mike? PSAC?
No, just a bit of information that...
Do you want to, if you've got it, could you come up here and say a bit, Mike, from the radio?
Bus or super, the Fourth Fair contract that brings individuals down and bring them back, keep them off the road was examined, it's a success. It will be used again next year and will probably be used more proper worded and put out. And it wasn't advertised as much, but that's what I feel.
I think it was a TV, a TV station down at the block.
That was a small machine, but we were happy with us.
That's great. Thank you.
And the contract security, since we don't have anybody, we had five people this year. As long as years, 10 years ago, there was no requirement for contract security uniforms, but nobody volunteers to do that.
Well, there was no, there was no sign up this year, unfortunately. I tried to, but there was no way to sign up for security even before.
And we just, I mean, you can do it, but you come to me or somebody like to say, I want to do it. But there was no formal sign up for long here because it cost us, I think, $15,000 for even a contract security. You don't have to do that again next year.
Thank you. Roads and Utilities, James. James is absent. Parks and Recreation, Semes Street, Christina.
The only thing that I would have to augment to what, my voice is just killing me that I'm able to talk, that Kyle has, that we are going to be moving forward on the... I'm unable to talk, that Kyle has, that we are going to be moving forward on the Girdwood Trails Plan this fall. We took a little bit of a hiatus after introducing this in the spring. We will be presenting a scope of work and budget in the September meetings. So if you are a user of our outdoor recreation in the valley and you have a voice that you would like represented as a particular user group, please come to the Girdwood Trails Committee meeting. That is at seven o'clock on Tuesday, September... Kate, help a girl out here. When's our next Girdwood Trails Committee meeting? The third? Oh, right after Labor Day. Okay, so come back from Labor Day and come to the Girdwood Trails Committee meeting to talk about outdoor recreational opportunities in Girdwood. Thank you.
Okay, Fire Department, Erin.
The only update I have is the fire board is meeting, they have a meeting set for September twelfth that I'll be attending. And on the agenda, we'll be covering the 2020 fire budget and setting dates for the AFT contract negotiations, which we hope to start, or the fire department hopes to start this fall, so.
Just have a quick addition there. Chief Weston was deployed to McKinley Creek Fire as command temporarily, so she'll be up there for the next couple of days until the incident command group that she's normally involved with arrives, is the ones coming from the lower forty-eight. But I like the, Chief Ashay just mentioned it too, I like to sing the praises of Girdwood Fire and how well they did with the hand tram response. They had just had actually a training about maybe four days or a week before where they sort of refined their approach there and it went super smooth. They used a, and if you read the paper, they did a good write-up on it, but they used an approach with the hand tram cart and went really great. And then we had a pavock from Air National Guard come in and PJs came down and were able to get the patient and take them right there from the terminal and take them out. So really great coordination by the fire department. We appreciate the efforts there and part of our review will be helping them to make things easier for that, hopefully they won't have to use it, but in the future with storing things on site out there. So big thanks to the Girdwood Fire.
Thank you.
A little bit of a windback wash from the helicopter.
Yes, a pavock makes it like a hurricane when they come in, so.
Okay, land use, that's me. Generally, no major stories on land use except for things we're going to cover in a minute. One thing I would like to point out is there was a, an item over the previous couple months about mining patents, and I'd like to call Brendan just to check I get this right. There was a request from the municipality to change our code to, to recognize some of the patents in Girdwood open space area and one of Girdwood recreational reserve, if I remember correctly. And in the end, they certainly decided not to take action on that. Is that correct, Brendan? I just want to make sure I'm getting accurate.
It's GWS and GDR.
Sorry, Girdwood Developer Reserve, not Recreation Reserve. So in the end, the community decided not to take any action on that. There's some concerns about how review and public input happens in parts, so they've just left this alone. It may come up again as an issue, but for the moment it isn't. That's the only general land use thing. Title one, chapter nine. We're currently on summer hiatus. We will meet again just before the next LUC meeting. Housing Working Group, we had a very lively, a small and slightly late discussion last week, but it was a very lively discussion. We discussed issues around short-term rental and how we're going to encourage development of more affordable workforce housing in the community. So one particular action we've taken is for the next meeting, we're going to go through the map and come up with some sort of idealized or potential locations where we could do housing, just as an exercise to see what it would take to do that. So rather than talking generalities about what the issues are, we're going to try and find some specific instances and say what exactly the issues would be in those potential developments. And that way it's meant to be a more concrete way of thinking about the problem and we can attack things in a prioritized way. The only other thing I'd like to ask is if Robin, if you had anything to say from an HLB perspective, I know you have the meeting coming here next month.
Will you encourage your move to a tent, please?
Okay.
Set it off that in the schedule.
Okay, can you remind me the date again?
Ten of ten.
Ten of ten. Because I know I'm not going to be able to make it.
So HLB meeting here at noon or the ten, September.
There's nothing new on industrial park.
Nothing new. The new sign will be put out before long, so we're doing that. And also, we're going to have to armor the creek bed. If you've been by there, the creek bed is starting to erode, the very expensive paint what we put in. So while we're working with Kyle, we're going to try and bring boulders down and place them to armor that so that we don't lose our shoulder.
Okay.
That'll be a project for next year.
One other thing, I mentioned this before, but I didn't express it correctly. The contractors that are coming out of the industrial park have the right of way and the people that are going into the dump don't believe they have the right of way and they will go right in front of their trucks. So I don't know how to solve that, but the contractors are not happy when people cut them off.
We've actually discussed that with our right of way enforcement officer, we're going to see if we can do some better wayfinding signage.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, public comment.
When is the next housing working group?
Oh, yes, sorry. I mentioned that. We discussed the short-term rental issue and we also discussed the aspects of if we're doing, if we work to do development for affordable housing or workforce housing, rather than just discussing in general form, what we're doing is picking a number of potential sites we could at least theoretically build on, that could be buildable. And then we're going through in detail about what the issues would be in each of those so we have some very concrete things to talk about in subsequent meetings.
And when is that next meeting?
The next housing working, I don't know. I'll always, I asked Margaret. Next housing working group. Actually, we have to move, so we don't have a fixed date. It's going to be probably the nineteenth. Turns out the eighteenth isn't available. Okay, public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Any public comment? Yes.
Hi.
Yeah, come up to the microphone. We can share it with everyone in radio.
Hi, my name is Robin Kenny. I live near Girdwood at one forty-one Lake Tahoe Road, over at the end of the airstrip. And I just kind of wanted to bring this to the attention of everybody. And there's, I'm sure people here that already know about this. But recently, probably within the last week, I believe it is, access to trails in the upper valley, if you leave walking down Airport Road, and I realized that since the new hangar's been there, they've blocked that out and they've kind of gone up and over and then hooked into the trail that leads out into Moose Meadow where you can take a right and go to the church. And now there's signs, signs prohibiting access to that area. And I think it's DOT that owns all that land back there, but it's been historically used by, I think, probably everybody all year round and respectfully so. I know I go out there a couple times a week to access the Winter Creek or get up to Aliaska to hike the mountain and as well as all my neighbors and probably most of the valley. So I don't know if that's anything we can do as a community, maybe start a discussion with DOT, if that is DOT land. It's a real unfortunate non-access to have to go and drive around or walk around and you don't want to use Aliaska's parking lots to park there to hike and move trails. So that's kind of what I wanted to bring up to everyone tonight.
Do you have a picture of the sign?
I do not.
Were there multiples?
There was multiples, yeah.
Are these on paper last week?
Yeah, the ones at the hangar, of course, have been there for quite a while. And then now, if you leave the church and you come down, now it's the straight ahead, you get the hill that goes over the top, there's one there, there's one on the hill. As you come up to the hangar and then you come up and over, and this summer, of course, it's been so dry, you can kind of go up and over. And there's one up there, and then there's one, I think, coming back down on the trail if you were to leave the church and take a left there to access that area. There's five altogether, I think. I missed a couple.
Carolyn Rodine, the Chair of Trails, let me know that she was going to be talking with Vicki Swain, who's the head of airport leasing, and so, who instructed to have those signs installed out there. So I think Girdwood Trails Committee is engaged.
Right. Okay.
This has been on our agenda, Trails Committee, for like what years? And we've always been, every month, we just, what's happening? This came up to our surprise, there was no, you know, no warning at all. Carolyn talked to a man at DOT who she said took Vicki Swain's place, so I don't know if he is on or quiet, but anyway, she said he was high C, sending her maps of DOT land, so that's all. But the Trails Committee is pretty adamant that we can somehow work this out. You know, there's got to be some way that we can work it out so that there is access, even if we have to go up into Moose Meadow, go up to the height, you know, go up the top there and crawl or something. So we'd like to work it out.
I know there are a lot of customarily used trails on airport land, not land that appears to be airport land, so allowing access to Moose Meadows by the church is actually on airport land.
I think it's to DOT's advantage to get this worked out because people will use the road and they will use what they, you know, what DOT doesn't want them to use if there's no access. People will just use it anyway. But yeah, I'm afraid still it's too slow, so we'll work it out with them.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, I'd like to say, I've heard it over the years also, and I hear the DOT is pretty concerned about people, you know, walking down the runway and, you know, through stops on the runway. And I'm fairly confident that it's actually been closed to public access all along, it just hasn't been posted and we all have chose to ignore it and come up with a solution to avoid this happening, so.
But then not having a public easement for access off of the taxiway encourages people to use the taxiway.
Exactly.
So there's a chicken egg. There'll still be a demand.
Yeah.
Any other, any other public comment? If not, we'll move on to all business. Agenda item LUC nineteen oh eight zero four. Aliaska Highway Pedestrian Safety Corridor Sweeps. Girdwood Alliance Discuss and Vote Regarding GTC and LUC Recommendation. The GBOS Resolution of Support. VDO T to Apply to Alaska CTP Funding to Address Design and Safety Concerns. Who would like to start on this? I don't really want to.
Well, I have a question. What's a CTP grant?
Community Transportation Program.
And who?
State.
State, federal? State.
It's a federal, I think it's federally funded, but state-run.
Federally funded, state-run. And have we ever got one of these grants before?
We have not. We are trying for one this year with Alberg.
Oh, yeah.
It's appearing later on the agenda as number fourteen.
Well, I guess I'll pick it up. Obviously, Trails Committee wanted this to happen and land use wanted this to happen, so they could use some support. And everybody doesn't like the sweeps. And so, do you want me to read it into the record?
No, we'll have a discussion for a little bit longer before we read it in.
Okay.
So, okay, I'll speak to it as well. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of concerns about sweeps we hear from the community and, you know, I express as well, as a member of the community. And I think there's, there's a lot of different concerns, but I think it sort of boils down to about four main things. One that's got a lot of publicity recently is how they appear to be a frontage road for drivers which are unfamiliar with the valley, or maybe some that are familiar with the valley but want to get somewhere quickly. And I think this is a, you know, you can see it as an individual problem, but for me, I see this as a symptom of different problem. There's the concern that the sweeps as designed go very, very close to the Aliaska Highway, and literally there's no buffer at all between Aliaska Highway and the sweeps. And that to me is the core problem. The, in our communication with DOT, they've given us lots of paperwork explaining why sweeps are safe and why sweeps are a better solution. And in every drawing in that data, they've always shown a separation of several feet between the edge of the highway and the bike path itself. And then what they actually built has no separation whatsoever. So there's been a bit of to and fro. In fact, I've had some to and fro with the DOT today on that. And whether they, they used to have a design where there's separation, it seems that for a while they had, at least in central region, they had the design that had no separation. And at least after the experience at Girdwood, they've moved back to a design with separation. In fact, is it, could you show some of the diagrams, I guess? So here's some visual aids I've prepared. So it's probably not, not one of the others. That's actually a vehicle driver along the sweep. Here we go. So this is a photo of, which one is it? I can see the name there. Of Brenner. So this is actually Brenner from about two hundred feet above it looking down yesterday evening. And what you can see is, as designed, the pathway comes along and it goes, follows this boundary, so it goes absolutely next to the edge of the roadway. This is called the edge of the travel white, I think is the turnabout. So vehicles travel right up to this white line and the bike path goes right up to that white line. And we have photos from all of the, all of the sweeps look exactly the same. This, this design at the top is what DOT currently say it should be designed like. What we notice here, the edge of the travel way is here, and they now declare there should be six foot minimum separation between the edge of the travel way and the edge of the bike path. And again, here we have absolutely nothing. This is actually in their standard handbook for how you're supposed to design those things, but it's, it appears they recently changed this after the complaints and problems here in Girdwood to put this six foot minimum. Diagrams, they showed drawings from before this, from back in the eighties, also showed a separation. So I haven't got a clear answer as to why they suddenly decided to design it this way, but historically they had a separation. Currently they have a separation. What we'd really like is to go back to this, best case. The other thing you'll notice on that upper diagram is the bike path is parallel to the highway at where the junction is. So if you're driving along the highway, you don't see a nice road that goes up at an angle and appears to be a slip road. What you actually see is a parallel road that's not connected to you that's, you know, six feet away. So I think this design also encourage, in this case, it's not actually a car driving on it, they have, there was a moose that just crossed here, so they were taking photos. But it looks just like a slip road. And on this design, the way that they now say they should be designed, and they used to say they should be designed, you don't have that confusion. The other thing I'd like to point out about this one, this is Danish, is the whole point of this sweep is to move people, is to move bicycles and pedestrians away from this area where you have very poor sightline, some vehicles coming down the side of it. But because this design goes right into the road, you can see from these marks here that people still use that old bike path. That's all erosion just from the last couple of years of use. So even though they're designing this way to move people down, and of course, people don't like it because you're too close to the roads, they end up in exactly the same situation as before, except as a driver, you're even less, you expect to see someone there even less than you would have done otherwise. So if anything, it's more dangerous. We have multiple examples of this, these are all the other junctions across the sweeps. You can see every single one, it comes all the way in.
And you see, most of them like that one have bypass, the people are using.
Yeah, you see about half of them, there's a, people are still using the original trail. You can see here, this vehicle is an RV, it's right against that line, which is the edge of the, the edge of the travel path. Now, the one thing DOT did do, you can see in several of these, there's some fill in this area. So they did put some, some gravel and soft fill at the edge there to try and allow people to take this, take this a little bit further away from the edge, but it's not, it's not a paved surface, it doesn't seem the same as the existing surface. These are nice and illustrative. So I think from my perspective, the, the lack of that separation is really the key problem. And it's leading both to people not feeling safe because you're right against the road and also it's leading to, it's leading drivers to see this as a frontage road. The other problem we've also had is glaciation issues, which is completely separate from this. This is an issue of drainage, not an issue of a sort of layout and design. Sorry.
I understand, one thing that I've seen, because I walk it a lot, especially in the winter, is the number of cars that actually go over that white line. winter, is the number of cars that actually go over that white line. It's surprising, the number of cars that have half of their tire or all their tire on the other side of the white line. And in the winter, it's even more prevalent. If you get a strip of ice or snow down the center, then you don't see the center line, and the, the road is now narrower than it was before. And the idea of making it narrow is supposedly to slow traffic down, which doesn't seem to have helped. And so, you know, that's my concern too, is that those cars, while they're even over onto that part of the bike path when they come down the road.
Sorry, any other questions?
Mike, you haven't mentioned snowplows.
Yes, I haven't mentioned snowplows.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I have not mentioned snowplows.
It seems to me that snowplows, good rate of speed on Aliaska Highway, and they throw snow. First of all, I think the plows would probably go over that white line, and they throw snow way over the bike path, and so it's really unsafe.
Right, because you're, because you're brought so far into the, towards the roadway.
And when they throw them wet, heavy.
Yes.
Water.
Snowplow.
And then, you know, we'll come through, and we maintain the bike path, and then a few minutes later, they'll come by and the bike path falls snow again.
Comment from a driver's perspective, I've two times seen, um, ahead of me, um, people driving, and a small child, looks like they're coming right onto the highway, and this car is swerving to the other lane to avoid a perceived child coming out onto the road, and almost having a collision with a car coming the other way.
Yeah. I believe, several of the sweeps actually are graded, they're, they're situated, so the path, the path away from the road is higher up, so as you're coming along the sweep, you're actually, you know, gravity is pushing it down towards the road, accelerating towards the road. And again, in the, in most of the documentation, and the modeling, and the, the research which justifies why they're safer, um, it's assumed they're flat, it's not assumed they're angled into the road and you're accelerating it. Okay, so, um, do you want to say anything, Crystal?
Not really, I mean, except that we would see this get passed, so we build issues soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll listen to the intention. On behalf of Gerwood lands, we're trying to gather and make working in conjunction, so.
Actually, do you want to come up to the bike path? I think you should, Eric.
Uh, well, the last Gerwood aligning, uh, airport, uh, we, we did vote unanimously to pursue this, uh, as like a, to help with getting a community together, put together the resolution, and also engage with the DOT on what potential options were. And Crystal was able to unravel, you know, through some research that there was a funding mechanism that was not identified before, and so we thought that would be a good vehicle for the resolution, to, um, start having that conversation, because then there's really no excuses, it's just needs to be addressed. Um, the conversation, uh, is going to be happening very soon too, and it should also include what temporary, potential temporary measures are available to us. So, so we're just helping facilitate that on behalf of the community, and make sure that, you know, we can get to some safe solutions. On my way here, I have two pictures of a vehicle chasing a bike down the front of the road. Like, the bike was about 100 feet in front of him, and he was, he actually came up from the other side of the highway, going this way, you know, and followed the bike, and I took a couple of pictures of it, because I was like, this is, it's crazy. Yeah, so, it's a real thing, and we have to address it, so.
Okay, so the, the purpose of the resolution is to try, is to request the Alaska DOT to apply for this funding in order to fund the redesign, um, and hopefully reconstruction as well of the sweeps. And, uh, as I said, I think the, the, what we're really asking is a concrete ask, is we're asking them to redesign them so they're consistent with their current design guidelines, not this, the temporary design guidelines they had a few years ago, that they, they didn't have, did have some of it for us, and then disappeared again. Um, there, there's one thing in here which I will want to correct afterwards, but I will read this into the record unless anybody else would like to do so for me? No, I don't think so.
Um, so you're making this motion, I don't think you can, you can.
I'm gonna re, uh, okay, in that case, can I hand over the chair to you temporarily?
Yeah, there you go. That sounds good.
I'd like to propose this, this resolution. Resolution 2019-12 of the Gerdwood Board of Supervisors, resolution of support for the Alaska Department of Transportation, AKDOT, application for Alaska Community Transportation Program CTP grant funds. Whereas Gerdwood is designated self-contained area plan of 1995 as a pedestrian-based community, you should ensure that pedestrian facilities are maintained and safe passage on a year-round basis, and whereas the Aliaska Highway Pedestrian Safety Corridor was built up to Scotland, Wesley, Gerish were killed in the vehicle as they walked, by a vehicle, as they walked on the shoulder of Aliaska Highway on December the 5th, 1981, and such pathways became the design model along new redesigned highways statewide, and whereas the community of Gerdwood through the Gerdwood Trails Committee, Gerdwood Land Use Committee, and Gerdwood Board of Supervisors lobbied for over 10 years for funding a renewal and repaving of the Aliaska Highway Pedestrian Safety Corridor from Monarch Mine Road to Crow Creek Road, and whereas funding for the pavement renewal project was procured via the State of Alaska Capital Improvements Program, CIP funding, and work was completed in summer 2016 in conjunction with repaving of Aliaska Highway. And whereas, after construction, GBOS on behalf of the Gerdwood community has expressed concerns to DOT engineering about glaciation issues on the pathway where ice buildup makes use of the pathway unsafe during surging conditions, and whereas, after construction, GBOS on behalf of the Gerdwood community has expressed concerns to DOT engineering about the safety of the specific, specific design of the sweeps, where the path is brought down to Aliaska Highway's edge of traveled way with no intervening buffer, and whereas after construction, GBOS on behalf of the Gerdwood community has expressed concerns to DOT engineering that the specific design to the sweep confuses drivers into using the multi-use path as a frontage road, and whereas to date, this is the bit I'm actually going to request changing, whereas to date, the only action of DOT to resolve these issues has been to paint boundary lines along the multi-use path, while other ideas such as adding signage, painting stencils of barriers at the access points have been declined by Aliaska, by Alaska DOT, as not within approved design standards, and whereas the Alaska DOT is responsible for design, construction, and maintenance of this right of way, and is eligible to apply for funding through Alaska CTP funding, and whereas the community has voiced support for Aliaska DOT application for, for Alaska CTP funding by unanimous votes in the Gerdwood Trails Committee on August 6th, 2019, and the Gerdwood Land Commu- Land Use Committee on August 12th, 2019. Whereas the recommended design for sweeps in the Alaska DOT's Highway Preconstruction Handbook, figure 1210-4, shows a six-foot minimum buffer between the pathway and edge of the traveled way, such their design mitigating many community concerns about direct proximity to Aliaska Highway traffic and confusion with a frontage road, and therefore, Gerdwood Board of Supervisors recommend and support the Alaska DOT applying for a community transportation grant to bring the Aliaska Highway Pedestrian Safety Corridor to the design standard recommended in the Alaska Highway Preconstruction Handbook, with a minimum six-foot separation between the path and Aliaska Highway EOTW, and to resolve the drainage and glaciation issue that will prematurely erode the path, passed approved, et cetera.
So you wanted to make a change?
Yeah, I would actually recommend just removing that paragraph completely, the penultimate one on the first page, whereas the, the, today the only action of DOT, et cetera. I don't see that as being beneficial.
Okay, we have a motion.
Well, I'm gonna make that as an amendment. If I make a amendment, I propose an amendment to motion.
Can I see? The, 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 it's being deleted.
I see, sorry, what we should, well, you're chairing, but what we probably should do is, I move, if we would want a second, please, for the actual proposal, so.
I'm looking for a second for the actual, now I'm looking to.
No, I'm going to propose amendment.
To actual discussion, and if you're able to oppose, propose an amendment.
I propose an amendment.
An amendment is to withdraw the one paragraph. Um, so the first thing we're gonna do is vote on.
We need a second for the amendment.
Second for the amendment.
Second.
Now we vote on.
And we, now we can discuss.
I move to support the amended motion of signing this and sending it to DOT.
Any other further discussion on the amendment?
Well, I'll just comment on why I think it's, I, there's actually several things that DOT have done, several things they won't, they seem to not want to do, and if we're actually going to be fair, we should list all of them, and then it becomes a, you know, a motion unto itself.
And we're asking them to do something, to beat up on my figures.
I think they already feel that, so there's no need to add it.
Yeah, they already know our feelings.
I, I have a question. Does the, does the DOT normally get grant money from the Community Transportation Program? Is it normally a recipient of that?
I suspect it's one of the main recipients.
Do we know how competitive this grant program is?
A lot of off-road systems use it, so improvements in Dutch Harbor have gotten it, Kodiak have gotten it, other communities that have, that are away from the infrastructure of South Central and off the rail bill are usually recipients of this funding. So it can be competitive, especially given the state's budget, right?
And do you know the amounts of the grants they give? Would it, do you think it would be enough to cover this?
I think maybe for redesign, I do not know if it'll cover reconstruction, but if we get it redesigned, then it's more ripe for it to be included in the state transportation plan, the step.
So, I, I'm looking to vote on the amendment.
Two votes.
Move to vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment of removing the paragraph? Okay, now, back to approving the original resolution support with the amendment, any further discussion on the original?
So I think we're doing two things. We're asking for them to apply for a specific pot of money to do a piece of work, but we're also pushing that there's a particular piece of work we want them to do. And it's not just a general complaint, it's a potential solution. So I think that pushes us forward in the conversation.
And, you know, I think it would be good for us to talk to our legislators about this also.
And they can be a lot more responsive, probably.
Yeah, good. So, now hearing any further discussion, we are gonna take a, a call for a vote on the resolution with the amendment. All those in favor? I will turn the chair back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach Eric. So, having done that, we are now on to number nine, review and vote on 2020, 2020 GBOS budgets via roads, parks, and records police. Presentation, Ken?
Sure, and I'll stay from here because it'll be much easier for me to discuss it. Um, but, uh, speaking on behalf for the fire department, Chief Weston, as I said, couldn't be here tonight for deployment, um, uh, through discussions with Gerwood Board of Supervisors, they are presenting a flat budget this year, uh, as compared to last year. Please ignore the last line down there, the differences between 19 and 20, that formula's not working right. Um, and so they'll be working with a flat budget there, but they also are gonna pursue, pursue increase in EMS funding from the area-wide fund with AFD, um, as part of their contract negotiations, which will start here in the fall. Um, so, we'll have to keep tabs on where the fire department goes, especially with their operating budget for this year, and then, um, have a discussion probably in first quarter revisions, budget revisions, um, if, if the current budget amount will work for 2020.
I have a.
Oh, so are we discussing voting on these individuals?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what they're, we could ask you. Sorry, we should discuss.
Um, are we going to, like, talk about one, vote on it, talk about the next?
That's, unless you want to go through each one.
No, I think we should do them individually.
Yeah. Um, one thing on the fire budget, um, so in the fire board, I believe it's Fire Board's operating procedures, they are supposed to approve the budget before it's, before we do, and they're meeting September 12th, so I'm wondering if we want to wait until after their meeting, or?
From a procedural point of view, we really recommend that the Board of Supervisors approves a budget so that we can submit it, OMB budgets are actually due today, uh, operational budgets to get them, get them ready for assembly review. Um, if, any point in time, if you want to halt the budget process, you can, and stop, and, and delay it, but we try to stay on the calendar because of all the budgets, I think the fire budget's the most important because they depend on quarterly drops, since they're contracted service, they get, uh, quarterly drops with each quarter fiscal, quarter of the year, so if they aren't set to know what they're gonna have, then it can cause some confusion, so. So, right now, it's a flat budget, I don't think they're gonna, I don't think the board's gonna want a budget that's less, but you can always go back and delay the process if we need to, but we recommend that you approve it tonight.
Okay.
So again, we can change, we can change the first quarter budget revisions as well.
Correct. You have two opportunities to do again.
We should say, although it's flat, there was a significant increase last year.
Correct.
We gave them at least more than $60,000, um, over the previous year, so there's been a, a proper, according contract cost by time set increase than the previous year, so it's flat on the high line. I'd just like to commend, I'd definitely like to commend Chief Weston for working with us on this and, and exploring the options and having a very healthy discussion. Any other comments?
I make a motion to approve a fire department budget of $793,000 for, uh, year 2020.
Actually, it's 1,200,000.
Oh, it's just not the contracted cost.
Yeah, yeah.
With the IGC, there's one point, one and a half, I gotta find out where the number is.
Column 2020C at the bottom, on the second page.
Okay, I.
Is that behind you all this time?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve a fire department budget of $1,242,000 and, can you see the number?
698.
698.
Second, is it five or six?
I got my glasses on, here's a, it's 698. No, it's five.
It's a five, I think.
So five, 1,242,598.
There we go.
Second. God, that was hard.
It was hard. All in favor? Okay, on to roads.
Uh, roads, uh, we have a slight increase of, uh, $9,229, um, that is mostly associated with personnel costs for Margaret and I. At this point in time, um, it does show an increase for my salary, but, uh, the last two years, we haven't seen an increase, uh, for my position since I'm an executive. Um, the mayor didn't increase his executive staff, so, so we just include it for now, and we'll probably know more by year-end as to where that goes, but we want to make sure, include that in case it does happen.
Okay, any discussion?
Just that Margaret and Cal do a great job, and we're lucky to have, the community is very lucky to have. ELD's board are especially lucky. So, on this one, it's the 1,6966.
You got it.
I make a motion to approve the roads' public works budget for 2020 of $1,60966 for 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess after one little discussion, and people have said something, huh, we get a really good deal for the amount of money we spend on our roads. The people that work on our roads, especially Burton, Jennifer, and the son, I don't remember his name, but.
Ricky.
Do a great job, and they're very efficient, and we're lucky as a community. Yeah, pile on that. We have a question from the public.
Just a comment, this second, which Jerry's had lived here for a few years, and seen the contact, road contacters work, his ultimate work, and I can't remember when the roads did that, because I appreciate everything that's happened for the roads.
We haven't raised the budget in six, seven years.
Seven years.
Yeah.
And in fact, we generally have surplus on this budget.
Yeah, we usually have.
It did cost us lots most years. And, uh, one thing I want to point out is, we did start last year, we started making contribution to, um, a capital account, and we're doing the same 25,000 this year. So, I get some of that. Some of that, some of that money is investment.
And we made a significant capital investment with the fire department.
Okay, not hearing any, I'll call for the, call for the vote. Those in favor? Okay, on to the Parks and Rec budget.
With Parks and Rec, we are looking at a $10,245 increase for 2020 as compared to 2019. 10,000 of that is related to 5,000 more in hard funding for the Four Valleys Community School Program that provides most of the recreational opportunities that we don't provide through Parks and Rec. And Anchorage, you'll find that Parks and Rec provides a lot of recreational activities for classes, programs, things like that. Four Valleys carries that weight and we provide them funding to do that. And then the other 5,000 would go to the general fund for GBOS recreational grants. So it would go from 30,000 to 35,000.
I think when we discussed this in the project work session, it was a combination of, I think we all, we all acknowledged how much Four Valleys does for the community and how much they're responsible for the, you know, some of the feelings of community here as well. So I'd like to thank Catherine, who's in the audience on behalf of, who represents Four Valleys and everyone who works on it and everyone who contributes to it in various capacities. And then also, I'd like to say, the other, the other part of it is to, again, acknowledge the other community organizations as well who contribute so much. So we thought as a, as an entity, we should probably reflect that and increase the budget a little bit. It's been flat for four years, I think, at the current level. So we just increased it this year. So I'd like to make a motion.
I was at the last budget meeting, I had trouble hearing. I support the extra 5,000 for Four Valleys Community Schools. I'm just kind of questioning the other 5,000 for the other entities. I mean, Four Valleys directly provides the services that are recreational. And I just wonder if we want to, you know, make 5,000 this year, maybe make another 5,000 next year, or we want to do the full 10,000 this year. I'm just thinking off the top of my head as I'm sitting here.
One of the very first questions that is asked of those that apply for our grants is what is your connection to transportation, to recreation in the Gerwood Valley Service Area? And each one of them has a direct correlation of underserved populations or mobility needs met and a variety of other ways to recreate in our valley besides using equipment to do so. So I think that all of them have met a very good standard that has been set and a good precedent. And I know each of us probably had a hard time sitting down and looking at the number that was asked by the organization and figuring out how to reward after hearing such great presentations last year. And I have two pages of notes on each presentation alone. They were so good. I support the $5,000 this year towards the other organizations.
I would say so too. I, that's, I mean, it's actually a fun part of our job, being able to allocate money to them, but it's the one, the decision that I always anguish over the most because it's like you're trying to piece, you know, give each group a little bit.
And they're all great organizations.
Yeah, so I support it.
Want to make a motion? I make a motion to approve, let me see if we have the right number here, 403,327?
Correct.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Anyone from the public? Asking questions, okay, let's move to a vote. Those in favor? Now we have police.
So police, we're actually looking at an increase of $35,957. With the new contract coming in, negotiated amount so far, hasn't that been formally approved, but we're moving in that direction, is 665,000 yearly. Currently, we're at 618,000. And there actually would be a decrease on this budget, which is the rental of the ACS building. When we first started there, we had to make tenant improvements to that facility and we paid that off over three years. Those improvements will be done this year. Those payments on those improvements, that is, will be done this year, so our rental will go in half for that facility going forward. So we go down to $6,000 for this facility. So, so yes, it will be increased with this budget.
One thing I want to add, the increase isn't quite from 618 to 675. The 618 is the base price. We've already paid CPI increases, so.
Correct.
We're actually paying 635, I think.
We will not have a consumer price index increase in the first year of the contract.
That's correct. We're paying about, we're paying about 635 or something down.
Correct.
So it's 635 to 675. Which I think reflects a, there's a better understanding, I think, from both William from us about what exactly is required. There was some guesswork in the very beginning of the previous contract, and I think now we're in a position of, of understanding what it really takes. Okay. Anybody like to propose a motion?
I make a motion to approve 686,288 for the 2020 police budget.
Second.
Any further discussion? I mean, I would just to thank you again for, I think, a fairly smooth negotiation so far, at least on the price side. Call for a vote. All those in favor? 4-0. Okay. Could you just go over the capital side?
Sure. So just to give a brief summary on the capital aspect, Gerwood Fire Department has a capital undesignated account of 391,000. They have $3,200, $3,200 left over and some change from the fire department, so they have a total capital account of 394,876.82.
And does that include the 2019 contribution?
It does not include the 2019 contribution yet. It has not been moved. When Michelle gets back, that's something on her list. The Gerwood Parks and Rec Fund right now has a total account of 209,310. We have two funds up there that aren't designated to any project yet. We have a fund that's designated to this room, 74,000 for things we may need for this room in the future. It's mostly furniture, AV type of things as the room ages. We just put money aside to prepare the deal with it. And the Gerwood Pedestrian Flasher has 6,648 not reserved, but it is tied to the project. The rest of that project is tied up and covered to be paid out as the contractor finishes the work. Street maintenance.
I have a question on the Parks and Rec.
Yes, okay.
I'll ask the same question. The 150,000 from last, from 2019 is included?
It has not been moved yet.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's something that we are actually holding off on, depending on things like hand tram. There's some things outside of our operational budget that we need to consider, so we won't move it right away. So we'll talk about that down the road. Street maintenance, we have a total of 636,177 in our capital fund there, and some of our funds are undesigned, some are designated. We are cleaning up some of them, like all the fish passages. Those projects are completed for design, so we will free those monies up. We have some associated with Gerwood Industrial Park. That is just a name holder, but those are available to be used for projects. And we also have some grants that are tied just to, like, for example, Alberg Road, the repave there for 106,000. We can only use that for Alberg, and that's part of our rehab of the paved road there. So, so yes, that's where we're at with capital for roads. Any questions? Contribution has not been moved either for this yet.
I do have a question about that. So we have been discussing that money, a part of that money, at least going towards the fish, fish and passage rehabilitation. What's the, what do you think the schedule is for that at the moment? Is that something we'd like to assign to next year?
We could take a hard look at it. I mean, I feel like we need about 700, 800,000 available for those three fish passages to go out to bid. Not saying they're going to cost that much, but that's the estimates we've been hearing. And so I think once we get through this budget cycle, that's something we'll look hard back at because we may be able to use the undesigned fund to move some money towards that account. You know, the other thing that we're chasing are wetland credits, and a new program now is to rebuild fish passages. Instead of people buying wetland credits, they pay to have fish passages redone, and we're trying to chase that right now with two projects out here on Turning an Arm that are going to need wetland credits. So if we can make that happen, then we can get the contractor to come over and rebuild those, and we wouldn't have to pay any money out of our accounts for it. So that's one thing we're working on.
Question. For the fish passage, did you ever circle back around HDR to get a confirmation on that 7 or 800,000 dollar number?
I did, and they said it's still in that range, but, you know, they didn't compare it to what maybe this year's bid rates were going. But they didn't give me a solid. I didn't want to pay them money, and so they just gave me more over the table, like, yep, that's still a thumbs up in that range.
As a former employee and someone who's going to the president's son's wedding this weekend, let me know if I.
You can get a pro deal, that's great. We like pro deals. And then with cemetery, we have 2,365 dollars left. We'll probably need to figure out what we want to do with that. That's from the pre-development fund, and we could reassign that to any one of the other fund strings, as cemetery now is, is sort of offballed until a larger plan is to work with Eagle River and find funding that way to build two cemeteries. And then just a quick summary, I know Mike's going to quibble here, but we have just a summary, and this is for people in the room, just understanding how our tax structure works versus the rest of the city. We are tax district four, and we last year had a mill rate of 5.3 for our services here. The school district was 6.16, so everybody across the municipality pays that school district mill rate. And then there's an area-wide of .18. Once again, everybody across the municipality pays that mill rate. So, and I think I quickly ran through this. I'm estimating that our mill rate's going to be 5.75 this year. Last year I was way off and it came in real low. I think it's going to happen again. Last year, assessed values in Gerwood went up quite a bit, so it knocked down, all my assessments for 2020 are based on, excuse me, all my estimates for the mill rate for 2020 are based on 2019 assessments of property values. And so I don't, I would guess that property assessments won't go up very much this year from what I've heard, that they were basically, gave real focus to Gerwood last year and looked at the property and the real estate sales and all that, and that's where they came up with increased assessments last year. So I do think, and there's something I need to figure out, I'm going to talk with OMB, but my calculation always comes in higher than what OMB comes up with, and so maybe that's a good thing because we are more conservative, make sure we stay. Our mill cap for Gerwood is six, and so right now we're .25 under that mill cap with my estimations right now. I do think it'll probably be lower. I think it'll probably be like 5.5 going forward. What does our services pay you for? So area-wide, there's quite a bit of services, as you can see up here, that area-wide tax takes care of up there, anywhere from street signage, striping, to treasury, legal administration. Like right now, we're using legal department to help us with the police contract negotiations, and so we don't get a separate IGC from them. It's all taken care of in that way. So we have those, those sort of different services there. Gerwood Anchorage School District covers all the primary K through 12 and secondary education there. And then for the Gerwood Valley Service Area, the taxes for this area cover police, fire, parks and rec, and street maintenance. In years past, it was also paid for the Gerwood Cemetery pre-development studies in that area. And so overall, we have the fifth lowest tax rate when compared to the other, all the other districts in Anchorage. I think there's like 34 tax districts, something like that. And when you compare us to the area that has all the similar services that we have, we have the lowest tax district in the city, the way we operate. So it works to our advantage to have a sort of a smaller town service area set up. There are several service areas throughout the municipality, and, and some of them have just barely any services, like for example, those that live up Pro Creek, they don't pay for fire, police, or roads. They just pay for area-wide and the school district. So they're actually the lowest service, the lowest tax rate in the municipality. So when you compare us, I think we get a fairly good deal for what we have.
So I'm going to justify Ken's comment, quibble about your, quibble about the math about the mill rate up there.
So am I.
Yeah, we currently pay 5.33, and we're talking about an increase of about 3% on the actual budget. So the 3% on 5.33 is still under 5.5, so we should be under 5.5 if things stay right on the same.
I think so too.
Yeah. It's an ex out mistake.
When I do the individual formulas to get the mill rates for the individual services, this is what kicks out.
Yeah.
See, I got, I got 5.42.
Yeah, it's under 5.42.
We'll have to look at that. Let's, let's just geek out sometimes.
With the increases, we have a $10,000 increase in the Parks and Rec.
Correct.
A $36,000 increase in police, and a $7,000 in roads.
Correct.
And with that.
Yeah.
We should have about, the way I got it is, yeah, about 5.42.
It's under 5.5, that's what I'm going to say.
Good.
But again, that can vary a little bit based on, from the assessment.
Correct.
Probably go down. And also the number of exemptions to be paid, that also, that also has to be part. Okay. Did you just want to go over the, we also have a fund balance report.
Oh. Yes, so this is just the undesigned account, and this is something, so Gerwood has to set aside a certain amount of funds every year, and so we keep a running balance for that, and it's called the Gerwood 106 Fund. And so when we don't spend all our budget, our money falls back into this basically account. And out of that account, we have to set aside for bond rating, since we're part of the municipality or service area, we have to put aside 8.2, basically 8.25% of our operating budget aside for bond rating. And that's part to keep in good shape with the creditors that we have. So 246,000 set aside, and then the Gerwood Board of Supervisors has an emergency operating fund in case we have floods or major fire or things like that. We have to set aside a certain amount, and we keep aside almost $600,000 to respond to an emergency situation. And then after that, whatever's left over is undesigned. So we have 335,000 that is undesigned, it's not tied to anything, and if the Board of Supervisors recognized that they needed that funding for something, they could move it. The last time that we touched that fund is that we moved 300,000 to a reserve for the fire department when they were being constructed. We were a little concerned that when that went out to bid, that we may not have enough funding for the unforeseeables, and so we moved that aside. And then out of that fund, I think we only used about $25,000 for the fire department, and since then, that fund's been moved to roads for a capital account. So, so right now we have 335,000 that's set aside and is undesigned and it could be used, so it's like a savings account in a sense.
Okay, any questions?
Just a comment. Lucky to have Paul and Harvey have to figure this all out, help us figure this all out. You know, like I said, the road budget's been flat for six or seven years. Parks and Rec budget's been flat for six or seven years till this year when we increased it by the 10,000. We've had an increase in the fire department over the last couple of years. We're keeping it flat this year. Police, we started paying for police three years ago, but that's where your money goes. We take it. We think about it. We worry about your money. That's all I got to say.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay. So now we'll move on to the next item, which is a review progress on negotiations for Whittier Police Department contract for police services for two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-three with two one-year extensions. I think you've already partly covered this.
Yep, so basically, we've met with legal. We have a draft version that we're ready to present to Whittier. We'll be meeting with them on Wednesday and going over that and handing it off. And then basically, it just becomes a review by their legal team and the administration, and anything that needs to still be worked out, we'll try to push it. But we're trying to get this done by October, late October at the latest, so that we can sign it, have it ready, because the contract expires December thirty-first at eleven fifty-nine. So we don't want to be without police service that night, so.
We don't want to be singing all the anxiety with no commitment.
So we will get this taken care of and wrapped up, and I know Whittier is just as motivated to push it along as well.
Okay, so there are no, no hangups at all at the moment?
Not any at this point.
Great.
So we will hopefully have something back to you at the September meeting and have the board approve it, and then move forward from there and go through the steps with the Assembly and the Whittier Council as well.
Excellent. Move on to our next item, agenda item L U C nineteen oh seven dash zero four. Introduction of proposal to rename the Gerwood Baseball Field in honor of Slayton J. Mole. Group will seek G B O S resolution of support. Let's see, who's presenting it tonight?
So I'm here as representing a group of people that brought forth the idea and seeking support to change the baseball field, the name to the Slayton J. Mole Memorial Baseball Field. Slayton was a community member for many years here. He grew up in Gerwood until he was in eighth grade and started playing baseball here. Cultivated his love for baseball, went on to play high school baseball, played for the Bucks, and went to college, and was unfortunately tragically killed in spring. And so the Bucks ladies want to get together and do this for him and for his family in memory of Slayton. We'll do our own private fundraising to get the sign together and a plaque, a black in there as well, and maybe do a pickoff next, hopefully do a pickoff next year with Little League and maybe a tournament and presentation and that. So we are hoping that G B O S will support this.
Thanks.
So to add to it, so we're hoping by having community support, we can take this forward. There's a clear procedure within code on how to name a municipal-owned property after individual. And so we would, after this, if we gain support tonight, we will take this resolution forward and present it to the administration. Administration then would probably put a selection team together. I don't know, probably made up of Gerwood individuals and probably somebody from the historic aspect. And then they would just review the request, and then if that looks good, they send it to the Assembly, and the Assembly approves the naming of the facility.
There are some timescale issues in there, I think it has to be, I know in the case of someone who's deceased, it has to be at least a year after that passing. So there may, it may not quite be, at least spring, it might be into summer.
Yep, we'll work with administration on that.
I'd just like to say thank you for bringing it up. It seems like a very fitting memorial.
Okay, I'll read it into the record. Resolution twenty nineteen eleven, Gerwood Board of Supervisors, we make a resolution of support for renaming the Elias Ball Field in honor of Slayton J. Mole. Whereas Slayton Mole was born and raised in the Gerwood Valley, where he learned to play baseball at the Gerwood Ball Field and was a great role model for many kids in Gerwood. And whereas Slayton Mole attended kindergarten through eighth grade at the Gerwood School, was a Gerwood Cub Scout, and was known as a hard worker and a well-loved by the community, his teachers and coaches. And whereas Slayton Mole's life was tragically cut short in an accident while attending college and playing baseball at El Camino Community College in California in the spring of twenty nineteen. And whereas members of the community of Gerwood want to honor Slayton Mole by renaming the Ball, the Gerwood Ball Field in his memory, with plans to fund design, construction, installation of a sign, and a commemorative plaque. Whereas this idea has been presented to and supported by the Gerwood Land Use Committee by unanimous agreement at their August twelfth, twenty nineteen meeting. Therefore, the Gerwood Board of Supervisors and the Gerwood Land Use support renaming the Ball Field in Slayton's honor to Slayton J. Mole Memorial Field, passed and approved by a vote of X to X on this nineteenth day of August, twenty nineteen.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, he was a great guy.
Vote for the votes, poll those in favor. Thank you. Next item is a review letter to D O T regarding lowering speed limits on the lower portion of Crow Creek Road. Jerry, do you want to take this?
Sure. So I got a request to lower the speed limit on Crow Creek Road from other residents who complained that coming, going down the road, people were speeding a lot on the paved portion of that road, and they wanted to lower the speed limit. And that being a D O T road, we have to go to the D O T to lower the speed limit. The speed limit right now is thirty miles per hour, and we want to lower it. We're deciding between twenty-five and twenty, and we decided on twenty-five. Correct? And we're only talking about lowering the speed limit for the first seven tenths of a mile that's paved. That's within the Gerwood Service Valley. Do you want me to read the letter?
I don't think there's any need to read the letter, because it's not a resolution.
Yeah.
It's up on the screen for anyone, for anyone on the radio, it's up on the screen behind you.
And this person who requested this has gone to her neighbors, and the neighbors, as far as I can tell, all the neighbors are in agreement, including the two local businesses, the Carriage House and the Little Muskie are also in agreement, my understanding from her.
Okay. Have we tried this before? I know we had, we did try and have some discussion about lowering the speed limits on Eliaska Highway, which didn't go anywhere.
We never tried an official letter. We just talked to him, and he said, no.
Right. So let's write it down and get it written.
So we're writing a letter, and then they can respond back, is our idea.
I have a question.
Yes.
So we say, you say the lowering the speed limit would be consistent with residential speed limits, which range from twenty to twenty-five. I was thinking all of our residential speed limits were twenty.
No, the ones, it's a weird combination, but basically, the ones which touch Eliaska Highway are all twenty. So Timberline is twenty, Eliaska View is twenty, Alpine Meadows is twenty, Cortina is twenty, Davos is twenty, et cetera. Except for two that are fifteen, but I don't know why. And then outside, ones which don't touch Eliaska Highway, like Vale, is actually twenty-five, and Saint Johann Louvre is twenty-five.
Yeah, so.
And then by default, they're twenty-five.
Twenty.
By default, they're twenty-five, except for the ones that have been lowered to twenty.
And they're lowered because they're connectors for the transportation framework.
Wow.
So Echo Ridge is twenty-five.
What? That's ridiculous. Wow.
Fifty-two, Davos.
So then staying with that logic, though, if we were actually trying to be consistent among connector roads, wouldn't we go for the twenty?
Yes, although it's obviously paved, it's a fact of that.
No sidewalks, though.
Yeah.
It's a draft. We can change it to twenty.
Yes. I mean, I'm all for changing it to twenty.
It makes me think we need to, like, re.
Twenty-five makes more sense, given the start, given the actual road is paved and is wider.
Yeah, it is paved and it's wider. If you go twenty miles an hour, you have to go really slow.
And twenty-five, I might not get that speed if you get on a non-compact bike.
When you're coming back.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Unless you're on a bike. Yeah, I think it makes sense to keep it at twenty-five. Okay, any other discussion?
It makes me want to ask for all of our streets to be reevaluated, but, I mean, to be consistent.
It's not D O T's responsibility, except for a couple of roads. They're all municipal streets, except for.
The rest would be municipal.
The rest of them, we would go through the municipal.
Traffic engineering.
Yeah, traffic. And that's something we could consider.
And the Gerwood area of land transportation, some such.
Yeah, actually, that's a good mechanism for doing.
Can I suggest lowering the residential roads? Because in twenty years, I've seen zero, twenty years ago, zero signs that say slow down, and now every block has one that says children at bay, slow down, there's dust, please slow down. They're copied up everywhere, so obviously it's an issue. So I think it's a good point to bring up that there's a lot of people not buying around the twenty.
Or twenty-five, depending on street.
That's also a level of enforcement, too.
I think, yeah, we could definitely, we could do that separately, or at least point out that the area, one of the things in the area plans is to look at transportation issues, so it could be done as part of the area plan, of just asking for a blanket twenty miles an hour on the main roads.
And the other thing would be to have signs. I mean, nobody knows what the speed limit is, because there's no signs.
There's most, I've seen that it means there's signs that say twenty, but fifteen for children and pedestrians and animals, but things like that can be written, too, so I don't know if that'll change the attitude.
So are we leaving the letter at twenty?
No. My idea is to leave it at twenty-five.
Yeah. Okay, let's move on. Discussion of short-term rental impacts on the community.
Let me just pass, so I, we're going to send this letter.
Yeah.
And I've got approval to send the letter.
Yes. We don't, I don't think we need to vote on it. We can vote on it if you wish. It's not a resolution. Let's make it formal, vote on it.
I had a minor typo, I just.
Okay.
The second sentence, lowering the speed limit would be, should be consistent, right? Consistent?
Yes.
Lowering the speed limit would be consistent.
Yeah, but consistent or not consistent.
Mine says consist.
Oh, you're right. Geez, I have two professionals.
If it doesn't underline it in red, it isn't a text. Okay, so I entertain a motion that we approve this letter and get it sent.
I still move it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Now you've definitely got the sentence.
Okay.
Okay. The agenda item L U C nineteen oh seven zero five, discussion of short-term rental impacts on the community, in particular Echo Ridge Road. Would you like to speak to this, Angela?
Um, I say here.
Yeah, I think probably give that to you, because the mic is further than the people on the radio.
Angela, here I am at three two four Echo Ridge Drive, and there's been a lot of complaints from people who live on that road who aren't nightly renters, that there's an increase in nightly renters, especially a few that do not even live at the residence. So in just about a quarter of the street, at the very end of the steep street, there's about fifty-one renters that could change beds every night. And we found an increasing problem with parking, and like last week I said, on a Saturday at six P M., there's thirteen cars for one home. And the problem I keep bringing up is our street is pretty narrow, our driveways come in at an angle because of the steepness, and so it creates a big choke when people park on both sides of the road, and it makes it really unsafe for the fire trucker and ambulance to get up the road, including the slopes, no removal and rock trucks to get to our area, so we can safely not hit those cars as we go down this steep, steep road. So we've just realized that, like Eliaska, foundations had rentals for, like, they used to do, and they were really good about having a few rentals. But lately, it seems like these rentals aren't regulated. They're not regulated like Airbnb or like B and Bs are regulated. There's no, no one to call when there's issues. Sometimes I have to call the property managers, and they don't answer, and they don't return calls. And so we're just wondering about regulation, about the amount of vehicles that can be in these driveways that are residentially zoned and only can hold about four cars, and there's sometimes teams of cars. And then the other issue, which is getting resolved, is all the trash problems, and then we have noise problems, we have drone problems. So I think it's a regulation problem, and like we've mentioned before, Anchorage as whole has about one percent of nightly renters in their community, and we have about thirty percent in Gerwood. And so, and it's just a big conglomerate on the end of Echo Ridge, because it's really difficult to, I think, fill down, so it's the last lots to get developed, and a lot of people are just using them as investment properties and don't seem to have as much of a vested interest in the people who live there and the communities surrounding them. So it's been a bit of an issue increasingly on the weekends and holidays and breaks and things. So we just, as, there's a few of us on it, we've ever become really kind of fed up with the lack of respect of the people that actually do live there. So that is what we are talking about this week.
So we've been, thank you, thank you, Angela. So we've been discussing the general issue of short-term rental, whether it's appropriate to regulate or not within the housing subcommittee. And the general sense there is, and I should say also, having discussed this with the administration as well, the general sense is that it is reasonable to regulate. We regulate other types of commercial-like housing. We regulate hotels, hotels, bed breakfasts, rooming houses, all sorts of things. Air B and Bs or short-term rentals in general can often be significantly larger than B and Bs. I mean, B and Bs are regulated, and many can only have three, only have three rooms, owners have to be on site, et cetera. Air B and Bs can be a lot larger than that and have much greater impact. So the general sense is that it would be reasonable to regulate in a similar kind of way to the way that bed breakfasts are regulated, so you would have, you would have to have a permit, you would have to register for room tax, which you are supposed to pay anyway, although there isn't a very good tracking mechanism at the moment. You would, you would, the number, the number of rooms and beds would have to be consistent with the, with the sites, the amount of parking, the actual property itself, et cetera. You'd have to at least have a, have a fire inspection, and insurance, and a few other bits and pieces. So it's basically on a par with, with bed and breakfast and other type of housing, other type of commercial housing. It would actually be a lighter regulation than many cities and towns, tourist and resort towns in particular, many of which put hard caps on how many, how many nightly rentals are allowed in a particular area, so I don't think there's any interest in doing that here, at least not now.
I think there is.
Well, there may be in some particular areas, definitely. But again, if you commit to getting the impact, so you'd have to have a local point of contact for, because you don't require the owner to live on site, you would have to have a local point of contact who would respond in a very short period of time, you know, like, within an hour. And again, we'd have, we wouldn't have these cases where there's two parking spots, but they advertise, you know, sixteen beds. So that's kind of where, at least where we're thinking from the housing, from the housing working group. This would be practically, it would take probably a year to get this process, you know, to get regulations put in place and process put in place. That's kind of where it would be if we go down that path. There might be other short-term solutions. Definitely, there are, there are ways we can, you can get enforcement on noise, you can get enforcement on at least very excessive parking problems if there's no access for emergency vehicles that can be dealt with by the police now. And the same with noise and trash, there's at least municipal enforcement on those.
Last month, when we discussed this under new business, Chris Shutey was here, and Chris Shutey perked up at the idea of multiple beds in a house and not having appropriate fire code followed by that many beds under one roof. And so is there, in addition to enforcement from the police side for noise abatement and trash regulations and parking, is there something that could be a little bit more forceful towards the owner of the house with regard to fire code violations? And how does a citizen carry that through?
I don't know if they can, because they're still effectively treated if they're private residences. Although, although businesses running through it, it's still law treaty to apply that way in code. So they would definitely, if we put regulations in place, then there would have to be at least a fire inspection, if not annually, then at least some changes. So initially. So initially, any changes, so it would at least have to be consistent or consistent enough.
If you're registered with a property management service, is it considered commercial?
I don't think it is. I don't think so. There's, there's nothing in code at the moment except for paying room tax.
You get one though?
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Yeah. I mean, you know, these areas aren't so commercial, so, although we are, I think most areas are zoned for sort of cottage district, whether renting the whole house out every night is cottage district, I don't know.
Depends on the weekend.
So that's, that's where we're going.
Sorry, trying to find something that gives you teeth as opposed to going through the process of an entire year of working through code.
And it might be less than that, but that's, I imagine it would take the best part of the year, if not the complete year. It would at least be six months.
Is there anything that we can do from a chamber, commerce type of way, way to go after some of the property managers who've been unresponsive to date? I don't know. I'm just asking the pertinent question.
I think the problem is there's nothing, there's no leverage. It's not, it's not something which is recognized at any level in the legal sense. So you can imagine in a case where you had a regulatory framework, if somebody was completely violating the regulations, then there's some sort of sanction because you can, you convert from a legal framework to not a legal framework.
Well, I mean, we are, we've sent how many letters to Scott Thomas about this? Oops. And yet we're still sending letters to Scott. If we can write a letter to Scott Thomas, is there any reason that we can't write a letter to a property manager that's being unresponsive to calls from citizens regarding large issues?
Neighbors could, or code enforcement could, or land use could, I suppose.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that happens.
Just exploring other ideas.
Chris Holt.
I just wanted to mention, we've talked about it, it sounds like the idea that homeowners association being able to target an area that's having specific trouble. So right, as of right now, I think homeowners are the majority on Echo Ridge. And so they could create a community meeting, just amongst themselves in a home, and determine if that's worthy of a homeowners association. And that will be a quicker route. They could also set guidelines in a homeowners association, possibly regarding cooking and also fines for violators. And then homeowners associations have a lot of enforcement with, if a, if a homeowners association fines a homeowner and the homeowner doesn't pay, they can actually go in against the property. So it does have quite a bit of teeth and can be put together in less than a month.
Charters and bylaws would have to be bought in by the majority, though.
Yeah, well, the thing about, the thing about the way the legal framework works in Alaska, the way it works in Alaska, my understanding is that the homeowners association is something that comes with properties that already exists, then yes, you can be forced into it. You can't sort of create one out of whole cloth unless one already exists, that's my understanding of the framework. But I'm not a lawyer, so if you're interested in going down that path, I would definitely suggest getting some legal consultation and see if you can create one out just from scratch. Or see if you can, you know, there was, originally that area was, was put together as a law and was turned into some legal, legal properties. There may, there may be some residuals for a people grab onto. And that would definitely be, if it's feasible, it would be a quicker path. But I think there are, there are some pitfalls there as well. And all that would do is address your local problem right now when the majority of properties are Airbnb that you could sell. I know the, the house that recently sold up there, the blockhouse, is being bought by a company now that is in, I'm not saying. So that will almost certainly turn into another Airbnb.
Well, one other means we have of at least documenting is that, the Anchorage website, Anchorage.
Yes. So noise complaints, project complaints, and potentially land use complaints could go through Anchorage Works. And any documentation there is useful for the future because we have a record of, we have a record of particular issues. And the same with, you know, if things really escalate, these get called, so that's another thing that needs to be documented.
The Anchorage Works app is very easy to use.
I think so a lot. I haven't got any feedbacks. I've committed so.
Okay.
So that is so.
We will have a discussion after this. Okay, I think this is something we should continue to discuss on and off, particularly if there are any issues or, you know, there are other parts of the community I know have, have issues with particular properties. I don't think there's any area anywhere else where there's sort of sinks concentrated in one area that are all causing problems to local residents. But I think this is something we should have on and off. Definitely in the meantime, there'll be a, there's going to be a move towards regulation in this community and maybe municipality-wide. Unless there's any other specific action, we can move on. Okay. 14, gender item LUC 1904-00. Discuss the vote on LUC recommendation for GBOS resolution of support, the GVSA application to Alaska CTP grant funding for Alberg paving and bike path improvements. So again, we're back to the CTP grant, this time for us.
Yes, so we're going to try to chase this grant to see if we can get any funding for the Alberg repave. And in this case, it would actually include the bike path. Right now, the funding that we have set aside is more for Alberg repave. We aren't particularly focused on the bike path. But through this grant, the two need to be tied together. It's a safety, these grants are mostly so focused on safety improvements. And so we wouldn't be making any substantial changes to Alberg besides just improving the safety aspect of the driving surface. But we'd definitely be looking at improving the structure of the bike path, which if you've been out there, it's cracked, it's sank, it was sort of put in pretty quick. So, so we'll chase that. And, and one of the aspects is we need to get community support to apply for these grants. So that's what we're asking for here.
Can you remind me how much we authorized for the Alberg, was it site survey to look at the repaving project? Was that $41,000 or $71,000?
Yeah, that would have been basically the design work and everything along those lines.
But that did not, that was just for the road, that wasn't for the bike path?
Yes, that was just for the bike path. So we would, through this grant, we would seek all the design work to be done and project management to be, and we would match what we required to match for that through the funds we have reserved.
And should we not be successful in this grant? Do you have an estimated project cost?
Uh, not yet, but I have a feeling it's probably less than $200,000 for a grind and repave.
Okay.
It'd be pretty, pretty simple.
Given that James has not, the meeting today, would anyone like to volunteer to read this? I'm looking at your hand.
I have a note by me, I'm trying to figure out where it is. I don't have it.
It might be on the back of a page, on the back of this.
I'm just going to read it first.
Thank you. I got it. I see it.
Okay. Resolution 2019-13, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, resolution of support for the Girdwood Valley Service Area Application for Alaska Community Transportation Program, CTP grant funds for Alberg, Alberg Road and the Alberg Pedestrian Pathway. Whereas the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, GBOS, is responsible for maintenance of municipal road service in the Girdwood Valley Service Area, GVSA. And whereas the GVSA qualifies for the Alaska Community Transportation Program, CTP grant funding. And whereas the section of Alberg Road from the intersection of Aliaska Highway and Alberg to 1000 Alberg Road has received no significant pavement maintenance since it was built over 25 years ago. And whereas the section of Alberg Road and the pedestrian pathway have been identified as project locations that would benefit from CPT, should be CTP.
Yep.
Grant funding. And whereas the Girdwood Land Use Committee recommended this action to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors by unanimous vote at their meeting held on August 12, 2019. Therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors supports the GVSA application for Alaska Community Transportation Program grant funds to improve the roadbed, paving and pedestrian path from the Aliaska Highway intersection to 1000 Alberg Road, passed and approved by a vote of X to X this 19th day of August, 2019.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I'd really like to see what the cost estimate ends up being. I don't think it's going to be just $200,000 if we spend 40 plus to do the design work. I'm interested to see what other improvements could be made to the pedestrian pathway.
Okay.
Just thinking about permitting and DOT and all that.
This isn't DOT, it's MOA right away.
Oh, it's.
It should be much simpler.
Okay.
I have one, thank goodness, question. In the last, the therefore paragraph, it says grant funds to improve the roadbed, paving and pedestrian path. Is that, you're talking about the bed of the path, right? The roadbed?
Correct.
I just wondered if that would be, might have confused.
We could write road slash pedestrian path, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can change that.
Okay.
No further comment from you, Mike.
Okay. So we'll consider that amendment made for the, for the road, the roadbed. Here are no further discussion, let's move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you, 4-0. Thank you. Next, discuss updated estimated budget for Hightower Road Drainage Project.
So we did a, we asked you at the, I want to say May to June meeting?
Third budget meeting.
What's that?
You had last third budget meeting, right? You brought this up.
Oh, I brought this up, but originally, we, we got approval from the Board of Supervisors for funding of about $36,000 to cover, actually, I had to say $48,000 to cover the rebuild of the first culvert inlet on Hightower across from the Merck. We would take out the bump out and put in the new Merck. I think I have drawings here. Yeah, it's too messy. I'll, I'll hold off on that for now. We sent, so we have a term contractor who does the construction. This is beyond Cooley's abilities because of concrete and asphalt. So we worked with the MOA term contractor who can do this work. And we estimated that through the term contract prices that we would need about $36,000 to do it. We sent that off to the term contractor and they replied, sorry, just getting past these drawings, to blow things up so it's easier to read. They replied after some negotiation with us that they could do the work for $46,000, so $10,000 more to complete the work. Their increased costs, we had them remove topsoil, we had to remove seeding from the project, that's something we can do on our own. They reduced their traffic control. But their increased costs have to do with the work down here. One mistake that our estimator made was that for the stormwater pollution plan, he had put 500 in there, it should have been 5,000. So we cut that by zero, so that threw things off. And then the costs for traveling down here for their subs, and then also the costs just associated with bonding this project and insurance for this project were close to $30,000. So, so they're not really making much on this. So he cut his prices as far down as he could do it and to complete it. So, so going with the term contractor, this allows us to move faster and get the project done versus if we put this out the bid, we probably couldn't do it till next year. And I put out the bid, I don't know if we would, you know, the way bidding's been going, we'd be coming in higher than the estimate like this. So what we're looking for is for the board to approve 10,000 more, and a little bit more than 10,000 to move this project along and hopefully we can complete it here in the fall.
It's got one little tiny stormwater drain, and it's going to cost $5,000 for that SWIP.
That's what we've discussed with them, and they say that's what it's going to cost.
As someone who prepares SWIPs.
We agree.
That is outrageous.
We agree.
I would barely do $1,000 on this. Barely.
I think that's where they make up their margin.
Well, your engineer's estimate also had $20,000 for unidirectional curb ramps, too. That we needed 10 of them for one little corner for the design.
I'll make a motion. Can I make a motion? To approve the final cost, which is 46, 417, is that what I want? For the Hightower Road drainage improvement project, which has increased a little over 10,000 from the previous, approve it now.
I'll second further discussion, please.
And this, and this money comes out of.
Capital fund.
Capital fund of roads.
Okay.
So further discussion.
So the 46,000, does that not include the 12, 440 that for construction management?
Correct.
On Lauren's email.
This is just pure construction.
It's pure construction. We'll have another $12,000 on top of that for construction management.
Construction. Correct.
Interesting, every, every project seems to have these significant increases. I mean, this is a, this is a physically small area. And I know there's a, there's some grading, it's a larger area, but paving is removed. But again, this seems like a very large amount of money for, for a problem, but not a gigantic problem. I find it frustrating that we use term contractors where whatever we ask for is $50,000 or just under $50,000.
The term on this is 100,000.
Oh, really? So they've made a mistake and not quoted as 96. In that case, it's true.
Having had the task force here earlier at the beginning of the meeting, maybe we should ask them for traffic control. Got $4,000 to $5,000 for traffic control. I'm picking out the, it's, it's honestly, the traffic control is what all the citizens there at that intersection do anyways. You yield to all the crazy dogs and skateboarders and children that are going to be running around that intersection for that week of construction anyways. And school comes in and out. And then you have everybody that goes across and parks at the Merck and back and forth at about the 4:30 to 6:30 hotspot. And if there's football on at the Silver Tip, you got everybody coming in and out of Silver Tip. $5,000 should drive it control.
$4,000, actually.
Oh, yeah. Deal. 10%.
I'll, I'll let you know, I've gone through each one of these and I've tried to work them down. And they're like, take it or leave it. So here's my thoughts, if we don't do anything, then it'll just continue to turn into a pothole mess through the winter.
It's a huge mess.
And, and then we try to go out the bid and we might end up in a situation where it's just more expensive, you know, in that aspect. I tried to look at it, can I have our road crew come in there and destruct it and demo it? And then have them come in and replace it? But the coordination and the handoff between two contractors just makes for a messy situation. And so, so we've, we've looked at the different avenues and how to do this. We can delay it and try to do a different avenue next year, but this is what I'm seeing at this point in time to complete the project.
It's costing us an extra work each winter.
Extra work each winter?
Or at the end of winter, we'll be fixing, fixing the potholes.
I don't know, I mean, it's just.
More than just fixing the potholes issues, it's when every time we have the freeze thaw cycle, they have to come out and they have to chip my parking spot. It's, it's chipping away to allow the flow to come to that tiny little grate that they installed.
Yeah, I'm personally there after each thaw breakup, shoveling slush to keep the thing open.
Yeah.
It's just, I mean, what I'm thinking, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of bloat in this again, and you know, we're being charged 46,000 for probably a $25,000 project. So, you know, the, the delta cost here is 20,000, and we're paying for the privilege of getting it done through a term contractor now. And I'm just thinking how much, what does that translate to in the additional work we're doing now? So probably that's a year of work. I mean, a season or so of that job.
Probably, yes.
So in that one, if you put it into that context, it doesn't seem quite as exhaustive.
Is this something we can bring up with the municipality the next time we meet them, about the inflated cost we're seeing on our term contractors?
Well, the point they made to me. Well, the point they made to me is like, if you don't want to pay for it, don't pay for it. But basically, these are the term contractors, and if the term contractor chooses to do this and we decide we don't want to pay for it, they're losing the business. And so, that's basically what it comes down to, is that...
That's not doing the work. It's not getting the work done and not paying for it. It's, it's not doing the work or packaging out, there's not an external competitive bid.
Sorry?
It's either do it as a competitive bid.
Correct.
Or, yeah.
Yep.
In which case, the time cost potentially will be in the situation we were, the flashing lights are paying, paying three times what we should have done, not just twice.
So, it's, it's a factor that we're dealing with, with the term contractor who may not even want to come down here to do the job, but he's putting this bid forward. So, so we're kind of, I'm stuck in a situation where trying to fix a problem, and this is the price I'm getting, and I'm trying to be as expedient about it to get the problem fixed before winter. And this is where we're at.
No, I recognize that. When I turned my car on this morning, it was 38 in my parking spot when I pulled out at 7:30. So, we're starting to, it's been hot certainly, but we're starting to get down to the colder days, so.
Yep.
But thank you, I appreciate you working through the contractor and trying to talk them down. I wish more of the public were here right now to hear us talking about $5,000 for SWIPs and stuff like that, so that when we think about that, that's $5,000, that's not according to a grant program this year. I just don't want to put it in that kind of context. So, if you're listening in radio land, know that I'm upset about this. But thank you for the opportunity to chat about it and see if there's, there are any other solutions to help out with this constant cost of doing business in Brooklyn.
Yep. Any other discussion? If not, I will, let's move to a vote. All those in favor? All those against? Okay, new business. Agenda item LUC 1908, 04, Little Bears Playhouse, Inc., initial presentation seeking LUC recommendation for GBOs resolution to support for bonding package to rebuild daycare center in its current location.
So, as you're well aware, the Little Bears and the Glacier City Hall, the old Glacier City Hall, have been a community-owned building since probably their creation in the 50s or 60s. Originally, Little Bears was the original town hall, and, well, I take that back, it was the original community club, which is used as a town hall and then eventually taken over as a co-op for a daycare facility. And then, the old Glacier City Hall was the old fire hall. It was built as a fire station back in the day for the first volunteer fire retirement here in the valley, and housed the first fire chief in that facility. Since then, the old Glacier City Hall turned into a community meeting room. It used to be where GBOs used to meet, and then moved into a storage facility, which it is in current day. Little Bears is still a daycare. Both buildings are well past their age for, for life, and Little Bears, we constantly keep alive each winter as the environment tries to take it back, but it has basically outgrown its use. It limits how many kids actually can go to the daycare here in the valley. Always has a wait list for kids to get in. And so, we've been working hard to figure out how to replace it, and we've been working with Little Bears, we've been working with Real Estate Department, and we've come up with a plan on how to do that. Many other attempts have been tried to rebuild Little Bears in different locations. A well-known one was the community center, a rec, community recreation activity building, which would house Little Bears, the health clinic, and a rec center. And we were fairly close on that while state funding was really good. We were almost there for a grant, we were almost in the pre-development, and then everything kind of fell apart there. And, and so, since then, the partners have broken up. The Gerwood Health Clinic is staying where they are, and they're trying to rebuild in that location, and we've come to the realization that where Little Bears is, is a prime location to keep them because of the recreation access to the park, which is actually named Little Bears Park, the tennis courts and all those things, which are great for child development. So, the proposal is to, in April 2020, put a bond forward to the Gerwood residents for $2.2 million to rebuild Little Bears in the existing location. It would be a teardown of both buildings over there. We would not build a new storage facility at that location, but instead, use all the space for a new Little Bears building. This kind of gives you a conceptual layout. We just finished these renderings, so these renderings are brand-new, and it would be a conceptual layout of what the parking would look like. We would pave the parking lot, which would be a big improvement for drainage. It would control drainage much better. It would put striping in there, which would organize it much, much more organized going forward. And then, this would be the facility here going in. Scrolling down, sorry, it's a bit small. We would, this is what the facility would look like. So, there would be a secure entryway, which Little Bears doesn't have now, so there would probably have to be a push button to get in. This would be the director's office, which would have a direct window to the entryway and windows to the kitchen and into the main lobby. The main lobby would have cubbies and a drop-off center for parents, and then there would be two classrooms, one and two, that could be organized as Little Bears needs. This building would also be designed for community use, so when Little Bears wasn't using it, it could be used for community use, weekends, evenings, things along those lines. There would be a flex room. This would give Little Bears ability to house infants if they wanted to add that to their program or give more room for more kids at the ages they're at now going forward. And then, there would be the utility rooms, the kitchens, the pantry. The mechanical room would be accessed from the outside. We're designing this building to be very simple in its utilities, lights, fixtures, no special things, trying to keep costs down, just a straightforward building that, that meets the standards for a daycare facility. There would be a lot more bathrooms compared to now, there's just one bathroom. This flex motor room could also work as a staff area. Kitchen would be bigger, so it could also work as a staff break area. And then, there would be a area in the back with a covered area playground, which would be nice, much nicer in the winter for them to have for outdoor use. Give you a little concept of what the building might look like. Now, these are just ideas to get people, wrap their mind around what it would be like, but this is what the Little Bears Board and through Karen Sakaro's architectural firm, they gave us pro bono. They helped to come up with this design. It would have a raised roof, which would allow a lot of light into the, the main drop-off area and also break up the roof line. It would be a flat roof. This roof would have an angle to it, most likely would have snow anchors on it, but the flat roof would keep us from having to deal with any drainage or roof slide issues, and we've had great success with it here on the fire department. So, it would be like that. This is from the rear where the play area would be. Just give you a concept of what that would look like. And so, we try to leave these windows open so that the great southern light that hits there in the winter could still come into the classrooms and would be there. And so, that's kind of a run over there. The mill would, if we were, if it was to pass, the, for $2.2 million, the yearly cost would be 143,000, which would be right now, at this current time, a quarter mill that we would pay back over 20 years. The board could dedicate more money at times to help pay that down faster, just like a home mortgage. So, that would be, right now, at this point in time, would be a $25 increase per 100,000 value of a property. So, if you own a $400,000 house, that'd be $100 a year that you would pay back towards this bond to pay it off.
What's the interest rate? Do you know?
Whatever, whatever the interest rate is at, at the time the bond is initiated, would be the interest rate. So, right now, interest rates are fairly low, but...
Really low?
Yeah, extremely low. So, they were taking that calculation when I got this estimate about three weeks ago. I don't know the, I don't know the exact cost.
The country's overall rating is a real, a real policy.
Yes. We stay with the AAA bond rating, we'll have the lowest interest rate.
What purposes are you asking me to go through? What is the timeline between now and having, since it's assumed, having potential resolution from us next month and October, and how that helps you get it onto the ballot?
Correct. So, we, if, if we get approval and support for September, we will include that with the packet that goes to the Assembly, and then we, most likely myself, will make a presentation to the Assembly about this, ask them to put it on the ballot for 2020 and inform them more about it. It is part of the MOA capital plan or program, so they've already submitted the description of this project as part of the OMB budget process, and so, this will be included in the packet, which tonight's budgets will be included as well. And this will all presented to the Assembly to approve as part of their 2020 operating capital program. And then, we would get this on to the agenda for the Assembly to approve wording. Basically, we would create a ballot proposition, they would approve the wording for that ballot proposition, and then that would go to the April election. The administration is behind this. As, as you can see, they already just put it into the capital program. They've been asking me to give more description about the program, which we have, or about the project, and, and they're ready to move forward with it. And HLB, our Real Estate Services, which Robin Ward oversees, has been a big supporter of this, and we've received a letter from Planning that says if this building is community-owned, then it can work on that dedicated park parcel, and it stays community-owned for the life of its, of its time there and that, and also if it stays a park parcel. So, so we have several steps ahead of us. I think once we get through the Assembly process, we will be working with the Little Bears Board to attend community councils in town and really explain to them that this bond would only be paid by the Gerwood service area, nobody outside of Gerwood service area within the municipality would pay for it. We're just asking for their backing since we're all under the same bond rating together.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, this is new business we'll talk about next month.
Should we all put next month?
I have a question about the flat roof.
Yes.
And you said the fire department had, like, the addition has that? The water must still drain somewhere.
Yes. So, on the, on the, this roof here, they have four outlets for the water, and they're heated outlets, and so, they, they come into the building through plumbing and then go out that way.
Okay.
So, they actually, I think they actually go into the sewer system that way.
Hmm. Is it, does it have a slight slope?
It does have a slight slope. To each catch basin, the roof slopes to that direction.
Okay.
Oh, yes, sorry, Brendan.
I had a few questions. I'm sorry if I missed some of it. I was wondering, short on a few, how much, like, capacity would this have for kids compared to, like, how many kids could be at this, as opposed to what we have now?
I think right now, the way we look at it, it could be, license-wise, they could do maybe up to 35 more kids.
Up to 35 more?
Yep. Depends on the age group that they take in. If they take infant, then their ratios have to be higher for the amount of teachers. They'd have more teachers for how many infants they have. So, that's why they've been kind of hesitant to bring in infants under six months.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
The other one I was wondering was that 2.2 million, how many, do you know how much it was per square foot? Like, how much it costs to do that?
Um, well, I'll go back.
4,000?
4,000.
4,000 square feet would be 5, just over 500 per square foot.
And we went on the high end for square footage.
Jesus.
But that also includes demolishing the old building, which, the old building, we probably know has abatement issues in it because at the very least, the sheet rock tape that was used in it has probably asbestos in it. We, we've seen that, they see that almost every building, that old sheet rock taping has abatement in it. So, that would be the teardown and upbuild of the whole building.
And painting?
And painting. Paving, and paving, yes, and drainage. Basically, the whole, the whole deal, so.
So, is paving something you want to do then?
Yes.
Because under the, under our proposal for commercial parking, it would be an option.
I would, in this area, I would say yes. This parking lot catches all the runoff from the alleys gas section.
Because you're lower.
Yeah, from, basically from the intersection here to over there, all the water comes that direction and goes through the parking lot. So, we would, we would definitely, we would actually try to see if we could have a catch basin built in the parking lot to tie into the drainage system out here, if not slope to tie in the way it is now. Yeah, we grade that parking lot at least twice a year to keep that drainage going, right?
He was talking about the history. First GBS meeting I was ever at was in Little Bears, in a little seat, in a little kid's seat. That's what we had.
I want a picture of that.
And the board sat at a nice table, and you were sitting in the audience at this little seat.
So, one aspect about it is the history that is this, and, and there's, there's been a discussion about turning the garage into a museum, and so, that's one part of the Historic Commission coming down here, is to discuss this and go over it and, and, you know, determine if the buildings are historic and what does that mean, you know, in that aspect? Can we take them down or can them, you know? Nobody's really talked about keeping Little Bears, which is interesting, but if people really want to keep the old fire station, which of the two buildings, the old fire station's in the worst shape, but, you know, we'll, we'll have to cross that bridge, and it's, it's a good due process about reviewing these type of projects as to what happens with it and, and figure it out. So, you know, things that we've learned from my research of the Historic Commission is that even when buildings are torn down, we can commemorate the buildings in other ways by creating displays, interpretive displays, things like that about the building. Could be stationed at the fire station, it could be put on property, it could be like that. If it's determined that the building shouldn't be torn down, it can be moved, and, you know, I think if it was to turn into a museum, we would have some serious discussions about how we make this whole parcel work because that would bring a lot of tourists to that location, and, and right now, the park usage and things like that would dramatically increase.
We have problems with parking in that building. I mean, you can explain, you can't even, how many people can be allowed in that building?
Just three staff at a time.
And if it snows, zero, right?
Yeah, well, you can still do three staff. We just follow three-staff rule all year. There can be people in there during the summer, but what they're most worried about that building is wind shear, that the wind, if the large winds that come down valley can make that building twist. So, they actually went in and took all the sheet rock off the walls on two or three sides and rebuilt it with three-quarter inch plywood to strengthen up the building. But the snow load isn't too bad because all the heat goes up the roof and melts all the snow.
I wanted to say that I think, to me, as a parent that had a kid at Little Bears, the thing that speaks to me about this and any plan is the security entrance. It drove my husband crazy that anybody could walk in there, and it's right there at the corner with everybody that comes to this town and all the people that come to the park. And I want to pretend that we live in a place, but that's okay, but we all know better. So, especially now that Gerwood School no longer has that kind of access, it is well past time that Little Bears has been living under these grandfather clauses for a long time. So, I think as we present this to the community, it does look really expensive. It is a multi-use facility, but most importantly, it's designed to bring things up to standards that really are well past time.
We should focus on that next month, too, and make sure that that's in the language of the bond.
Oh, it would be.
Yeah. And that, and of course, as Bill Falsen said, make sure very specifically, only Gerwood residents would pay for this.
Right.
That will be important.
Yeah. Well, and you might wish that it was going to carry more kids, but, or open up more space for more kids, definitely ones that are younger or whatever. Some of those limitations are based on available workforce, but also, the building we have now is really substandard for the number of kids that are allowed there. Also, it's through grandfathering, so.
It's like some of the stuff that I had when I was a Department of Defense kid in Berlin, Germany in the early 80s.
Yeah, well.
That's made something.
Brendan, do you have another question?
Yeah, this is just, I don't really know anything about the, I was curious if you could tell me about, like, this, like, you mentioned the site selection, you know, considerations. I don't know anything about the, really the plans over by the, the elementary school, but like, is there, was this, is there nothing over there we could do?
Well, we did discuss, at one point in time, one of those alternatives was to actually build on to the school over there during the bond process for that school. And we were basically evening away from saying yes, and the school district was like, okay, we'll include you in the design phase. The rec center didn't want limitations about being on the school property, and, and so it was going to be the rec center and Little Bears tied together, and the rec center learned that they couldn't use the rec part during school hours, and they said, no, we don't want to do it. And so we, we kind of lost the window to do it over there in that aspect. We looked at other parcels about it, and none of the parcels, the sections that they had within their parcel weren't large enough to facilitate the whole building.
And this is right next to the playground? I mean, that's the, that's the other main.
Yeah, we, that's what we, we just came back to it and said, it's just been working so well here for so many years, if we could keep it in the same location, it would work well that way.
Okay, so no more discussion. We'll move on to the next item, which is gender item LUC 1908-05. Discuss agenda topics for the GBOs LUC Joint Meeting, tentatively scheduled for Monday, September the 16th at 6:00 PM. That's right. So, on the back of the packet, we have an agenda, which is basically just one item, which is to discuss regulations or objectives, which I think is actually a good topic.
Anything for parking that we need to talk about? Trying to remember all the units from the last meeting.
Parking town-wise? I mean, there's still, we could, we could touch on the topic after the, especially after the Blueberry Festival, we could touch on the topic of, you know, parking for events again.
Yeah.
That might be, just having a joint discussion. Okay.
I will say, I won't be here for that meeting. I don't know if that, you said tentatively scheduled, but...
Well, I think tentatively scheduled for 6:00 PM. If it happens at all, it will happen.
Oh, okay.
It has to happen, don't we have to have one at this point, because we said no to two others?
I think we have to have at least two in the course of a year. I don't think, I don't know if we've actually hit a year yet, have we?
We postponed the last one.
Sorry? Yes, we have to have at least two within a year, and I'm not sure if we quite hit the year yet.
Well, I mean, we can create this rule, we could change the rule as well. It doesn't make sense to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, right. Maybe there are a few topics to discuss, though, I think.
Yeah, the land use one, talk about short-term rentals.
Yeah. So, I'd suggest, just adding in a second, second topic of parking for events, just if we have a long-term strategy for that.
I know you're going to miss the GBS meeting next month, is that what you're saying?
No.
It's before the, it's before the GBOS meeting.
It's the week before.
Oh.
It's the week before GBS.
I guess I, oh, it's the week before, you said?
No, it's the hour before.
No, it's the hour before.
Oh, the hour before. I guess I will miss that, yes.
Yes, yes.
But I will be here for the grant presentation, two days later.
Two days later. Gotcha. Okay, any other, any other topics for that meeting? Okay.
I make a motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock second.
Oh, yes, we do need to. Yep. All in favor? Let's hope we can get in under 10. Last item, discuss additions of capital mill rate outside of GBSA current mill cap of six mills. So, this was the discussion we had, we had a discussion last year when it looked like we may end up with a lease contract that hit our six-mill limit, possibly went over. And we were still discussing things like bonding for Little Bears, bonding potentially for other projects in the future. So, about a year ago, it looked like we were definitely, we're certainly going to exceed the, or hit the little cap this year. We're obviously not quite there, depending on who Matthew believes, which would probably be between 5.4 and 5.8 mill, plus 0.24 for the residential, although not in year one. So, we're not going to hit the mill, we're very likely to hit the mill cap next year, possibly the year after. But the discussion, the discussion we talked about last year is, is either to have a separate mill cap, which is just for capital projects, which potentially could include funding and bonding, depending how we write the language, which would either be purely in addition to or partially supplementary to the, to the existing six mills. And we could imagine a set of scenarios. One would be, we create a new capital tax of up to one mill. Or perhaps we create that capital tax of up to one mill and actually reduce our tax cap for operation. There's several options around it. I don't feel it's quite as pressing as it was a year ago in this discussion, but I still think it's valuable to talk about it, because again, we're probably going to hit this in the near future. There's far less grant money available for projects in the near future. We have a lot more, we have a lot more facilities to, to keep maintaining, and we still have capital needs in the future. So, although, again, I don't think we're going to hit it in 2020, by 2021, 2022, we could do. And we could have a decrease in assessed value, which is another way we could end up hitting our tax cap. So, any thoughts on creating a, creating a mill rate purely for capital?
I support it wholeheartedly. The, we have $3 million among the four budgets this evening that we voted for, just to get the town's operations going. And then we're adding a quarter of a million dollar piece of equipment at a very high-density intersection. We're looking to construct something that's going to add, like you said, 0.2 plus to our mill rate in the future. We've got this facility, which although it does have a rainy day fund for it, it only has $75,000, $74,000 in it. Every single project that's been brought to us from a user group in the community has had a parking issue associated with it. As we look at the planning for the trails plan in the future, I've talked to multiple user groups about the parking lot at the end of Alberg, and how it's insufficient for the bikers in the summer, and the skiers in the winter, and the fat bikers and the others that want to go out there. And even a lot of the backcountry skiers have used it to go up to the hut. So, if we're looking to potentially look at doing more connections, and if we are going to have connecting trails blocked off by DOT, as we found out this evening, or as we improve the to-be-nate newly, newly redone Moose Meadows Park, which would be rolled up into the trails plan, putting adequate parking there, and all the drainages that we have, as we have larger shoulder seasons with freeze and thaw cycles, I mean, how many culverts has he redone in the neighborhoods in the past couple of weeks? And although at a really great price, it's just, it's adding on to it as we look at all this other infrastructure. So, my desire and the timing, in addition to are we going to need it, are we not going to need it, was also public support of it. We've talked about it for over two years now, as I've, or over a year now, as I've come onto the board. And I think there's actually some momentum to getting it passed within this current climate, so that if we were to craft language this winter to go on to an April ballot, I think we have residents in the community, among all the different projects and the improvements that we're making, that we're having to rely on a capital project campaign and planning process. It's got screening criteria and rankings and all the stuff that we've done, because we don't have the state support that we had years ago when funding fell through for the rec center, funding fell through for parking and planning alternatives. So, that's my input, is I think it's a good time to put it forward to the, to the voters and ask for their permission beforehand, rather than the, oh crap, we need this, so you need to give us a capital project fund. I'd rather ask permission than beg forgiveness, because we've had an open conversation with our community about it.
You look like you want to say something, Jerry.
Well, I, I disagree. And so my disagreement is in the last thing, rather than saying, oh crap, we need this money, I think that we should wait until we have to say, oh crap, we need this money. And one of the reasons I believe that is, I would like to really focus this year on Little Bears law and making sure that gets passed. It's very easy for us as a board to sit up here and think the community will pass these things, but, you know, their experience with our police, you know, it was three votes, and the majority of those votes against voting for police service, and Jerry, were all because they didn't want to be taxed. And while we don't have anybody in this room that comes to these meetings that wouldn't pay for this tax, as soon as you start taxing people, you're going to get people in this room. And there is going to be a lot of people that are going to be in disagreement of paying more taxes. And, you know, to convince these people that it's necessary, we have to have a really good reason. And I don't think we have that right now. And the way that we do our business now, my belief is, we're doing a really good fiscal responsibility in adding money every year to these capital accounts. So, I added up to date, the fire department with the $74,000 last year, 2019, the $74,000 in 2020 will have $550,000 in the capital account. The parks department with the $150,000 2019, $150,000 this year, $209,000 we have now, will have $509,000. So, the roads will have $686,000. So, we have over half a million dollars in each of these accounts that we continue to build up there every year. And to me, it makes more sense to grow the community, and if we have big projects, we can't fund with the money we put into these capital accounts, if we go to the community and say, we've got a million-dollar project we want to build at, over by Moose Meadows and the soccer field, and we say we want to bond for it, and that way the community gets to vote. I mean, for us to sit here tonight and make this decision, you know, with the community members we have...
We clearly don't make decisions, right? It's new business.
I know, it's new business, but, you know, what will happen is, if we were to bring it into old business next time and vote to approve it, you know, come six months from now, people go, well, I never heard about that. You know, that's just the way...
That was true, that was true with the police vote. There were, there were people who did not hear, had not heard about it when it made on the ballot, despite it being...
Yeah.
Honestly, when was the last time we saw our media?
People have more interesting things to do.
Yeah.
Strange that it may seem.
They're all watching it online.
That's right, everyone's watching.
Yeah, this year, if we go, say, 4.5, 4.5, and, you know, you add another one, like, three-quarters of the year, we're going to have to pay for Little Bears, right?
I don't know, practically, I don't know what point would actually come out, but it would be...
We'd start paying for Little Bears in April, right? If it passed?
I believe so. I would have to ask that question, but I think, I think when we start taking the funds, you know, we would probably start right away.
Yeah.
Because we would want to build in 2021. So, yes, once we start taking the funds, then we would, we would have to figure out how that works.
So, it's about 5.6.
From what I recall, from what I recall, you actually start paying when you take the funds in stages. So, we wouldn't be paying for them after the beginning.
And I, we would, that would be interesting to find out, because, you know, once a bond passes, you can't be taxed for the bond until the next fiscal year, when it starts. So, that's a question I don't know anything about, and I need to find out more about this.
But either we're at 5.45 or we're at 5.62 or something, but we still have room in our budget. You know, it isn't like we're, and if we, I think that we could, I think it would be difficult to pass two different bond measures in the same year.
So, so as a thought experiment, just to understand what you're opposed to. If we said we want to reduce our operating tax cap to five and add a one, a one-mill capital, so we don't change the total taxing at all, what we're doing is restricting ourselves out in the future, so we have to put money into a capital account, would you still object?
Probably.
So, I would for different reasons.
My reason would be, would be, just what you just said, restricting our ability to move money around.
Yep.
And right now, we were very flexible, and, you know, they did that in Eagle River, they had this restriction of, they had to have certain mountain capital, I think they went back the other way.
Well, they actually, they actually just rebalanced it. I thought they went back, but it was actually rebalanced it.
But I, you know, I think the system that we have now works pretty well, that, you know, fiscally, we're, we're putting money into these capital, these capital accounts every year.
Jerry, I completely respect where you're coming from, as far as like getting the public behind one particular project and getting one to pass it, and I believe Little Bears has definitely the shining star of the bond packages next year to do that, and I want to put full support behind it. But just as you said, we are contributing to our capital accounts, but there hasn't been a single project that's come to us as far as like big planning and designing that's been just $500,000. So, the accounts right now are not ripe enough to take on any of the capital projects that we talked about last year. Each of them were about a million dollars. So, we've got Fish that is going to be between seven and eight. We've got a full redesign and construction of a huge recreational, outdoor recreational facility that's going to be about a million dollars. And there's several others that were on the list that we talked about at last budget. I know you were on the floor, you didn't hear a lot, but it was still within the meeting packet, you had all of those. And it's still a lot of the same design cost that we went over last year. So, respectfully, unless we're magically going to start putting more money out of our operations account into these capital accounts, which it doesn't sound like we're going to have the opportunity to do when we have an increased mill rate to accommodate a bond, I think we're going to get to the point where we've got projects that are a million dollars, and we're still a quarter of a million dollars away from them. And that's why I encourage us to look at doing a capital account now.
And, you know, like the Fish Passage, you know, we've got, roads budget, we've got $686,000.
But we also have Alberg and a whole bunch of other things in the process.
Right, and we're trying to get grants to help with those, or wetland mitigation efforts, and, you know, we're looking at ways to...
Which is prudent for us to do, I agree, but those aren't always going to pan out the way that we need them to.
Yeah.
I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to find out other sources of income in order to balance our budget. But there still needs to be, if we know something's going to cost a particular money, we need to be able to put, have, ability to have savings for, for when, you know, that those are coming up, because of stress on our community from not only its residents, but outside visitors that utilize our facilities.
I was just thinking about, Mike, what you asked, if we reduce the operational to five, and then...
It's a thought experiment, I'm not recommending it. I'm saying it's a thought experiment.
Is that possible, or is that...
I think we could, we could always reduce the tax cap, I mean, there's nothing, it's just, it's a number. I don't think we even need voter agreement to reduce it, I think we only need voter agreement to increase it.
I mean, do you think we could go down to five? Have you run the numbers?
I, I don't think that quite works, at five.
Okay.
Fire.
Well, we would have to, because we're making capital contributions at work, we're making slightly less than, no, it's actually over, it's over about capital contribution. It would just about work now, yes.
Okay.
So, here, yeah, we'd be over by here.
Well, we'd maybe just, you know, depending how the, depending how, depending how assessments work, actually, is what I'm trying to...
Well, I think with the mill, I mean, if we did do a mill towards capital accounts, we would still be saving over time, just like we are now, in order to do projects. It might be a little sooner, but...
Yeah, but there would be all in one, you could take a full million dollars from the capital campaign, from the capital account, and say, here you go, redo Moose Pass, we're a full million dollars, really, here, go do all the Fish Culverts that we need to be done. Do that heavy lift all the time.
The problem we have now is we're saving slowly towards these things, but the need to create it and the savings we...
Exactly.
Yeah, but again, we could, we could wait a couple of years to do Fish Passage, but then we have to wait another 10 years before we do the next project, you know, $75,000.
Or if it's a big project, you bond for it.
Or it's bonded, yes, that's right. So, the way I would actually structure it is, if we had a, if we had a separate tax cap for capital projects, it would include both bonding payments and capital savings.
And honestly, the Little Bears is a much easier bond to pass than Fish Passage. And honestly, The Little Bears is a much easier bond to pass than Fish Passage.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want a bond for $800,000 of Fish Passage. That's not going to go anywhere in the community. I'd like to be able to pull it from the capital campaign, capital cap, and be like, we need this.
Things that actually are a real physical deliverables is much easier.
I, I would agree with Jerry, though. I, I think we would be risking The Little Bears project by putting both of them, asking for two more sources of money than just doing one at a time. Because I think people would be more likely to pass The Little Bears alone than they would be to pass it if there's another thing asking them for money at the same time.
There are plenty of things asking people for money. They're mostly ASD and other areas in this department. But we had a couple of, have you bombed requests that were at last?
Yeah, there were a lot.
Eight, I think.
I think Little Bears will pass. If we bonded for Moose Meadows improvements, which I do see being over $1 million, because of all the recreational pursuits in this community, I think that would pass. But there are other things that I just, I'm not quite sure, and when it comes to keeping up with some of the infrastructure we're putting in, I just want to make sure we're covered in the long term. I support the thought experiment, if some would maybe do competing algorithms in the next 30 days to see if the 5.1 does work. Where would we have to cut? I don't want to have to cut the $10,000 we just came to the grant programs, that run separate recreational opportunities in this town.
Well, right now, I mean, as Mike said, I review my numbers, and it actually will work.
We just, but again, we're subject to this fluctuation of assessed values and capital line.
And if I need more money, and...
But it was just a thought experiment. It's not something I'm actually proposing. I'm just wondering what projections... I would actually propose, if we were going to do something as a compromise, I'd propose something like a, well, again, we do not, we don't actually, it doesn't work going to the, we can voluntarily reduce it. We don't actually need a vote to reduce it. We only need a vote to increase the tax cap. So we can, we can sort of make a decision not to exceed 5.5, and then write back in to ask for that, ask for the assembly to effectively reduce our tax gap for us voluntarily and do a one-mill capital.
What is the process for that? Does it go into like the fall budget request that we're putting in?
This will be separate. If we, if we want to increase a tax cap or create one, that requires...
I understand that. I'm asking for the voluntary production.
It would just be something, currently sitting as code, so reducing code, that's my understanding, as I said previously.
So then you could do it anytime.
Do it. And we could do that, but we, you know, we could set it up, so we only did that if a vote was, if a vote was possible. We could, we could actually set up an ordinance so that it would have automatically only if we got the one-mill capital. So we can just have a piece of code sitting there ready to be triggered.
I'd be interested in, in writing that back, just at least have it on hand. Be a good learning for me.
Okay.
I recognize it's still fifteen.
Yeah. So I, yeah. I still think it's worth, I do not feel there's a, there's a necessity to do this immediately. I do see there's potentially some advantages in doing it now, so it's in place for future when we will need it. Because just because we pass a, you know, even if there's, just because we repress the tax cap doesn't mean we'll get it, of course. And just because we've granted a tax cap doesn't mean we have to use it. We're not using six now, although we could. And typically, the municipality goes up to tax cap every single year. We don't do that. We try to keep it below that.
You tell taxpayers to trust us, right?
Yeah, totally.
That's why I'm saying you need to show that we're planning for it.
Yeah, but I, you know, just, that whole idea, while, you know, I don't know how to express it well, but that whole idea of having taxpayers trust us, we're not going to use it, doesn't sound good.
No, it's actually happened. It's been the way it's actually worked out over the last 10 years or so.
Yeah, we've done a lot.
I'd much rather ask for a, I'd much rather request a one-mill capital tax cap than try and increase the current one to set. And to me, it's making it an investment is a much better argument, and it's a better thing for the future.
I agree with that.
Okay. I, I think we should, unless anybody else wants to discuss this any further now, there's any commentary.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan!
You got nowhere else to go?
Oh, yeah? Oh, man.